I would like to thank you all for making it to this venue and others who are still coming. They will find us, as we'll be carrying on with the work. I would like us to open today's work with prayer in the form of the national anthem. Can all men please take off your hats?
Thank you very much.
As we continue. Yeah, I would like to assure you that you have arrived here in this meeting where we are going to talk about a bill that is going to be discussed today. The bill which talks about protection and preservation of agricultural land. I am not alone from the committee of parliament. I am accompanied by members of the parliament who serve in this committee from different political parties. I would like to introduce Honorable Montwedi from the northwest. Honorable Damine from Quazulu Natal. Honorable Kapa from the eastern Cape. Honorable Mbata from Hauteam Province. As for myself, I am from the northwest. Honorable Masho from Limpopo in Pohom. Honorable Mbabama from the eastern Cape. Honorable Briet from the Free State. Honorable Masipa from Amatlala but serves in the western Cape. I would like to recognize in our midst the presence of our Speaker of Waterbeck. Recognize our Councilor of Mutimulle, Councilor Mboweni. Recognize amongst, in our midst, the following organization. Sidemen Farming Community. Alma Poultry. Bakwena Poultry and Abato. Le Palais Business Forum. W R S A. Wildlife Rauchin South Africa, that is your W R S A. And Professional Hunters Association, South Africa. From the National Parliament, we have people who assist us in this committee. Those names that have been mentioned, please greet the community. And again, the team of parliament includes workers from different units. Can you stand up and let us see you? Now, let me take this opportunity and welcome Councilor Mboweni to come welcome us here in Mutimulle. You have indicated Deputy Chair. Can I indicate that I'm actually Councilor Mboweni? Can I start by greeting the Chairperson of the committee? Greetings to the Members of Parliament here with us today. Greetings to all Councilors from the district and local municipalities from Waterbeck. Greetings to all Councilors from the municipality from Waterbeck. All stakeholders present here. You are welcome here in Waterbeck. I think we are gathered here because we heard a calling. From the Department of Agriculture. It was a calling or an invitation from the Department of Agriculture. Whereby we are going to engage on the bill that is going to be tabled here today. Deputy Chair, we know our communities, they are faced with challenges and also the issue of land. And again, the issue of land, it's something that a lot of people do not sleep because of it. As we know that land contributes a lot in the modern agriculture economy. That is why you see our community here in their numbers to come contribute towards this bill because it affects their lives. I've went through the proposals Deputy Chair and they really talk towards our communities. But understand that what is it that they need to do as the community. Today, we believe the challenges. I saw the proposal and then now I hope that since the committee has visited us today, we are going to get a chance to talk, to ventilate our challenges that go through related to land. Because these are challenges that we actually talk about every day. So today we've got a chance to talk to the committee about all these challenges. Lastly, Honorable Chair, I saw some departments and some stakeholders. Now. Now, the challenge that we face from time to time Deputy, Honorable Chair, it's the challenges that come with spluma. Our traditional authorities do not really understand this law. So we hope we're moving forward. We will bring them and sit them and explain all these matters to them so that they are free of fears that the government wants to expropriate the land from them. With those words, you are all welcome, even our leaders, you are all welcome.
Now, we're getting into the business of the day. We have indicated that we are here to interact with you on the Preservation and Development of Agricultural Land Bill that we call PDL. Now, this PDL was introduced in parliament and referred to the Portfolio Committee in February 2021. So, PDL in brief, it seeks to entrench regulatory measures of high potential agricultural land and to promote a balanced approach. A balanced approach in the use of agricultural land. We are here because currently there's an old legislation that deals with subdivision of agricultural land. It's called SALA and it's an Act of 1970. Now, SALA prohibits subdivision of agricultural land without the consent of the minister that is at national level. This causes conflict on what we call cooperative governance because you have other spheres that is your provincial and local government. SALA again, it is only applicable on privately owned land. Which means it does not take into consideration state land, communal land, land under our traditional leadership. And because it does not also consider your provincial and local spheres of government. It means the spluma that Memo Locomi is talking about, plus the spatial development framework at provincial level are not also aligned with SALA. All of this has posed a challenge on the agricultural land. Me and you will agree that we are losing much high value agricultural land. We are losing agricultural land to mining, to urbanization, to your informal settlement and also to renewable energy farm projects now of late. Everywhere where we knew that our great grandparents used to farm, whether it's livestock, whether it's crops, has been turned into informal settlements. They've built malls on them, they are mining areas as we speak. Now, PDL that we are here with seeks to address that. For the local and provincial spheres of government. PDL makes sure that these spheres of government has sectoral plans for agriculture. Our municipalities, our provincial departments, they will not only have plans but they must also provide resources for such sectoral plans. Now, when the municipality comes to you with IDP participation, they should point out to you their agricultural sectoral plans in their IDPs. Now, the reason why we are here as this committee is to directly interact with you. Because public participation is one of the key strategies in parliament. That ensures that you are involved in lawmaking. We are here to engage and solicit your views and inputs on this PDL bill. Now, it will not be enough for you to say, "I support the bill, I don't support the bill", without giving us reasons. It will be also important that you also point out to us on some of the clauses that may be of concern to you on this bill. As you raise your concern on these clauses, please also give us proposals to help us to go and rectify. Your reasons and your proposals will enable this committee to process this bill further. Today, we end in public hearings for Limpopo Province here in Mutimulle. We still go into Wampumalanga and the Northwest provinces. When we are done with all these public hearings, we're going to consider your oral submissions. We also going to consider the written submissions that we received through radio adverts and newspaper adverts. Now, all those inputs will be consolidated into a report that we will then invite the Department of Agriculture, Land Reform and Rural Development to respond to such. This committee will then consider the responses from the department, including all the submissions that we've got. We will then submit that report for tabling in parliament. Through the debate, if the parliament passes that report. The bill will then be taken to the other house, that is your National Council of Provinces. After processes in the N C O P, it will eventually land on the desk of President Cyril Ramaphosa. When the president is satisfied, he will ascend or sign it into law. That's how we make laws in this country. That is why we say our people are lawmakers. You take your role in making law that governs sectors in this country.
Amaitliam, now it's time to make the law. Now, this is the approach we're going to follow. We are going to give you an opportunity to make your submission and also tell us whether you agree with the bill or you disagree with the bill and also finish your reasons. If you have some concerns about some clauses in the bill, just highlight those concerns and give us your proposal. How can we amend those clauses? Everybody is going to be afforded three minutes. Not more than three minutes. Not more than three minutes.
Re ko paha re retla mpana niwababachulu.
Can we please respect one another?
Mualebe ubuala hai.
Ume ghaunelue iloru, I mean if somebody says something that you don't like, just relax, it's their turn.
Re ko paha re refana kasebaka sahu uchwa la, si buisa singlisa sing, reska ato salera tahaba troya wambabua.
And now you two are going to get a chance to have your three minutes. Let us not make noise when other people are speaking.
Haru zwa la kan tlerisebe di sa di ofisi di zari ka uwa ntsé la zawi tusezo, haru zwa ka tom porza to simudumo.
And now even when you want to go out, you want to use the lavatories, just do so quietly, please don't make noise.
Now, uro bata horu, re amohèle re le komiti e ikarabe la motza timo tuu.
Now, as the committee that takes charge of agriculture.
Ore ba thobaro na balime ruiva lo narale ma tata amangata le matwiye uwa amangata.
We would like to agree that our farmers, our farmers have many challenges that they face on a daily basis.
Mbasa ri tili enkaswa na kasheko, ki huwisa na kamo lauana, watsirelezo lensezo pele yama fatse atimo tuu.
But now, what we are here to discuss today is to discuss this bill which is about the preservation and development of agricultural land.
Biya no hai karutwa zele ubuwa kadilo ze di nze non uro komiti eka zu esari tlayla, hau uchoyo yeta je uzebe uro uzuile motzele ngianu keleka uhu buseza mu uro uro, harifuma ne substantive inputs out of this bill.
So if you can find yourself tempted to talk about matters that we are not here for today, I'm just going to indicate like this and then be... So please know that you are out of course. Please get back to the business of the day.
Hari lo ukauleza bua mpa, uluebe leme zu zu emeraruka uro, hau fita three minutes, anything I will tap on there.
It's not going to be happy to cut you short. Please just be brief, just go straight to the subject so that you are able to use your three minutes to say your input.
Se pe uko uro uro ba thobawa le baba wambaba tankhu guava fuma ne sebaka, ya no rekase mameli motuale mu uchoya uchi ilager.
The objective is to make sure that everybody who wishes to speak gets a chance to do so because we cannot listen to one person the whole day.
Resenza ribuleze le ufo fmana, di submissionika umoala, hau uchoa uro uro batehutla ko laini. You can still write to us, udi fair the secretary at desk kamo.
And now there's another option of submitting your submissions. You can do that in writing.
Ghe we kuwa uro 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 nyaku bolela, ukanu muala fasé ume utla uta uwa watisha di chixinyo chaga ukuwa tafelige.
Re ko paha uro ba thobaro na, also ba sa in languhi jaba le temu hara haruna, banali di tilo kamo pele mu mu batala uwa na nchanle interpretation.
Another thing is that if maybe there is, we have members of the deaf communities in our midst, you can actually sit closer to the interpreter there so that you are able to follow.
Re ready, ra kala ya no, ra simulol.
Are we ready now? Can we get started?
Re siyame agirabachulu ra uchwa na.
Amaytliya, did I make myself clear?
Keleka nyikemi seza di tilo ze u. Mama uno bata hona le simwe before uro uro simulol, oro ma uthuleza uro 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 uro.
Did you want to say something? Did you want to say something before we can start? Because I am still going to note the speakers.
Retonga round uzepe.
We are going to take two rounds?
Aris tatenka round uro na ya ntsa.
Now, let's get underway with the first round.
Ki ko pama thoho, ama tlanu kamo la.
Can I take five hands from that side?
Tsaya ba troya wacholu ya kale troye za wan twitaring. Ki utla kamo la una bachulu, ki senza ki shabili la ineleki uwo ne matohua ma fo kamo, tlan kamo uwa papa.
Be patient, I'm still coming to that side, I'm still recognizing hands from this side.
Malome, dula peleke batala baba kamo la uro uro opaska reki mutimile banava pamisi te kamo la, toka ko tla nga udi bantzele pamista matomo.
Yeah, everybody who had their hands on can come, take your sits here in the center.
I'm just getting language preferences so that we can go quick.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Ra uro tebekse tika tri kamo le ba zere seven ineleki bata five. Next round I will only take three. Aki tibeli etza mu ki bata uro ki recognizea matohoo on this. Ki ko pama thoho kamo papa la.
Ah, I am now going to take hands from this side?
Yes. It's two. Hosana le matohua man kamo.
Do we have more hands from this side?
One, two, yes mama, kefede te kama ma komora.
I'm done with this side.
Ya komora ukuwa mama wak.
Can go to the back of the queue?
Okay? Tla bele felete kamo kale troyo le, ya komora uro papa.
Take your seat at the back.
Refedi te kamo.
We are done, we are done with this row?
Now, bon tatebalin tu san ku, kia uko paha uro kamo leno utema thoho, ai tarang hadi tilo di nze di ba mt, lebele akenya kamo agir.
Now, those who are assisting me with the queue, please, we are going to take hands from this side.
Ki ko pama thoho on this row? Daddy one?
Can we raise our hands on this row?
Ki no utilen tate, two, three. Mama komora uro kuwa le four. Four hands, re kuwete kamo agir. Retla katala kama ma komora uro, le aboni agir matohua kamo.
Okay, we are done, we have noted people here. I hope those who are helping me with the queue, I hope you saw the hands from this row.
Ba thobaba uro ki ko paha uro ye ma ubuwa, uro ulebi zola hau, le uro uchoa uko kaai.
Now, when you get an opportunity to speak, start by giving us your name and then tell us where you are from.
Owo oska le bala uro uro ulela uro awaitekha biliye kapache limabakaha.
And don't forget to let us know as to whether as you support or you are against the bill and also to give us your reasons.
Re ready uchustata ya no.
Are we ready to start now?
Tovela. Tovela. Kedna Buti Japita'u, momu dimole, kidira mu sidi ben famans ko pras... ko prati. Moridira ka e teka e le na na ule, moridira nte ngara lema, re lema di meroho, midi, re lema di uze di nsi di bedruti di kebi chi. Ya nu mu kebata uro uro liri tusele ka uro kenaleba, kenaleba omewa barar, ba ba kebe rekan lebo. Pele, len te aruna ke nyani, ke half, ke half ya hectare. Berucho pala mousse hore, Uro tullele hektar, ore fe pléker kupale vinté pala mousse. Le, Le ma nyora ho jala, Two, three, four rekupale eh len. Ho chala mo di jalun zaron, kidi me la horke fediz.
Thank you very much. My name is But Japitaou. I am from Moudimole. And I am a part of a farming cooperative. I stand here in support of the bill. In our cooperative, we do farming. We do vegetables, we do maize, we do beetroot, cabbages. So I would like the committee to help us. There are three other people that I work with. They are all women. We only have half of a hectare where we do our farming. So now please help us with a larger land. And also please help us with some compost. Thank you very much.
Eh, tawela. Wa bolela mo ke kawu, Tapala. Ho tawakale palale mo, wa mamuyala park. Eh, kala tehha, Sesi shalangu, no ko pala, o ko pala, Ko pala zé pedifela. Samatomo, Ke pléke, hoodula, wa gudula nte. Pléke arina haye, haye bozi, umoke lohoro. Kaku mana pléke ya timo. Eh, savu vedi. Eh, kina leba, tawaba ntiwa bananlili certificate sa timo. Ifela, pléke zabanaga, asabadu fuma. Len na mo kilité kinali certificate sa timo, ifela pléke ya ejoa kai fuma. Nego ko pala, maybe, Gatu seha, mo utwaholo na, Dan, uko na ku mana pléke ya ejo, uko na olé. Kala wo.
Greetings. My name is Tavo Tapala, from Le Palale. Firstly, I would like to say that I support this bill. And I have two requests. The first one is that we are requesting land, so that we could do farming. And the second request is that we have people who have acquired certificates in agriculture, but they still haven't received the land. So we are requesting land. I thank you.
Eh, tawela. Eh, na ke Petros Maringa, Ke tawak pléke nyatsama Hansi, Mukopani. Kialima, Kiwaala beetrooti, Spinaxi, Carroti, Kamichiaha, na kiwaala ejuwa e salenyana, ke te waro malatuki. Tawakiwa na yeho, hakena ma nyora, hakena silo, kele maga mo jarate nyaka. Tawela.
Greetings. My name is Petros Maringa. I'm from Tamahansi, in Mukopani. I do crop farming. I farm different kinds of crops. But the only problem that I have is cultivating cabbage. I do not know what the problem is. And again, I do not have manure, so that I can proceed with my crop farming. I do not have land, I do that in my yard. I thank you.
Eh, ko zo matumpi. Eh, wa bolela mo, Hendrik Mayepa, from Alma, Ma Bali. Eh, arnali di tlo tlo zé ntsikua wore napwa. Le ke isinla wore nakile lenyaniyana, arnali di ruwiwa, di kolo we, di pudi, di komu, di koho, Di ozeka ofa pa, arnoba di ke lisi ke di plaza. Komuza arinadi, zamari zanakamara di plaza zamapohwa, mapohwa banalu di swara, Abadi swara tso ntsere buwe, rodi patela ridinz. Arinad pléke, oru di komu di ja, arinadi furui, kasa saba kakenakwa di yamari, ho wa wiima. So, nerere puwala ileka muho, Lega kola hori, tlela ka muho la, rau lega muho reka ira yenge na. Ra so kola pléke nyala wore na, ra malema, na mutuwa wa, Makala wa wore na presidenti, mutuwa plaza, ma so koli. So, kanzer le ko pala, retu sey, re ma Afrika, na ka muho. Kialé wo.
Batuwa ba holo liska leba lahola,
Thank you very much.
Tawora ala tehha kapa halithekumala.
One other thing, community, please remember to indicate as to whether it's your support or against the bill. Thank you very much, my name is Hendrik Mayepa. I am from Alma, in Ma Bali. So, I'm from that small township. So, we do a lot of farming there. We have cattle, pigs, goats. But now, our challenge is that sometimes they cross into other people's, into farmers' crops. And then these farmers confiscate our livestock. And then another thing is that it's winter now. So there's no, we do not have grazing places. So please help us with some funds, so that we are able to buy some feed. Thank you.
Tawela, kina wini okta, ke tawale fasenla hasli, ka kule palale. Kele masadi, ya radan ya timo. Eh, riberochobela, Wore jo le kayera tlo tehha mula, oka kanyo owale na, re awdumele bila ra tehha. Mara fe la, arle basadi, Ka mo le palale, oka re kacha timo. Haona mutua, ar tehha ngasilo. Bila haona le mutua, rubonchansilo, rubasadi, rso ntsiri zé zé pala mo timo. Dilo ka muho ka holi belela ka ra timo, ke ba nna. Holi belela ka ra timo, ke batuwa shewu. Jo le riberochobela pusho ya re na, oka rubatwam timo, shejamba sadhi. Itan kadi training, leta le traininga basadi ba le palale, Ba zé beka kacha timo. Ene, le tuixa, rapele kataba ya le fas. Le fas o kule palale ala wona, re shota le fas o kule palale. Re koka lena, ucho, le to retuixa, le fas lela la le palale. Le bucheke re na, batuwa banzu, batwam timo, re aso kola kwa. Exa ro rolele fas ka muho ka. Re chobela, re li shejata ba ewu, because re na, rubatwa ora ta timo. Ra ra ta holiima. Eh, letabaya di commercial gardening, re diya di gardeninga kamra wa manu. Ah, essential, batuwa ba, we're di le di garden, re bele jo, re ki produce di tamati. Ke hono di ra tamati sou sou mola. Ke hono di ra, sesi weka mo la pure. Ke hono uisha marketi, hono di assessi. Mara re apalala, because we don't have land. Arinale fas, re chobela, ucho, uretuixa. Jo le ka basadi ba le palale. Le renar, rubonagala, jo le ka basadi ba nagai, ka muho ya South Africa. Wore kannedi, rubasadi ba ba radan ting. Ene kannedi re ra ta, na kiya tehha mula oka kanyo, because it will bring changes, Mo ba tumba banji, ba re le wona ka ra ka muho. It will bring changes, le herifika ko ma gaeng, rubolela le basadi ba ba le kule palale, rubabuchagore. Riha jo, re jo tehha mula oka kanyo. Ucho senelo. Wore dilo ka muho ka di te di hono ntlafajo. Rubonagalo re ka ra timo. Re koka di funds, mucho warinari tehha kadi funds. Re hono ki ra di fundsi, je di kadi ra, wore, reki jo le di je cabbage. Ke te waro reki uisha mara ke, ngi uisha mara ke, omo fi. Wa kala belela ka seti nyawa tabegi, deris, ahona maraka. Mongare le reki limile, ki nti je cabbage, wote nti ya quality, ngai uisha mara ke. Hora oru, ke so nti ko chobela, mutu mucho, uo mo wa le mo place, ngemo hao fi. Anji ele cabbage we, ri sheper tori. So, re a chobela pusho arina. Ra le chobela ka wiko ko be jo retu sey. Ka ba kalaru ya suffering, re ra ta timo. Timo ki ndwe wosi, bila itisha tabula, odi lo ntsi di nti. Mara, ka ba kala, rso na le fas, rso na di fundsi. Koso na di training, batuwa sa, ba basa wore na basa, kaku di shuwa, bonchiwa wore. Na kati timo, rso nti retwa meka, re diye. Heki bolela, ke le so, ribe renali eh, mohowa, ya di hope tree. Kinali certificate sa poetry. Refele di je retu hela. Ka ba kala, rubonagora, we don't have space, enough space. Mo iloru duhochela reka ya mola. Eh, we don't have funds. Mo iloru ngafele di je bila, ki di sele la lena, ke so na leba leba festive. Ke apa le, ke kugeji. Jo le re le chobela, government arinari ra ta, ngudu ngudu, retu sey, le re tehha. Le renar to le tehha, jo le ka basadi. Kialé wo.
Greetings. My name is Winni Okta, from Le Palale. I like agriculture. Firstly, I would like to state that I support this bill. As women, we do not get any support or any guidance. And the only people who mostly are involved in agriculture are men and also white people. So I'm pleading with the government to please provide women in agriculture with support and the guidance that they need. And I would also like to plead with the government to provide us with land. Please look into that matter, because we do not have any land that we can do agriculture on. We only use our backyard gardens to do agriculture. We would also like to do commercial farming, so that we can also be able to cancel our produce. I like this bill, because it will bring changes. We also need funding. Please provide us with funding. And again, we do not have markets here in Waterberg. Whenever we want to go and sell our produce, we have to maybe ask the white farmers in our area to help us transport our produce to Pretoria. And I would also like to inform you that I have a certificate in poetry. But I ended up giving up on poetry, because I could not get any support. Please provide us with support. I thank you.
Ko zo. Ko zo. Samatomo, arle wini cha chiloru, mamukari chile moru, tawakulela le ba parlament, je je ri di toka. Kakopelo. Wa yemi mo, kilisiba Francisema, ocha komuwa la kwenya. Mapela, Asema. Fineli, NPOA, ele Mapela Food, Nutrition Community Centre. E to kometin, kaka karé jo, batuwa Mapela Mukopani, wo bo ti, bakhalavi, Ba ke kulu, di di chiwa na. Ba, batoka ang, tucho. Ri ke mesedi iti, ho wa tuxa kadi yo. Ose, mu tiari, le manchiwa na. Mu tuwa Mapela Mukopani, ba kanbe, ka muho kaluwa Mashashani, nte na, Mapela Food, Ki iran, aririrele re na, rirela ba na varina. Re tehha mula oka kanyo, oh. Oh, ri ti si te muho ka je nu. Nke, Di kawela di sebenzi di utwa. Kar na kwenya, no bolela, no ngono, ta, kamra wa fa ife, sir, sa to bolela nanjoani. Re a chobela ka wiko ko be jo, retu xa nere, le ba tariensu. Remotso kolo, ngio kolo, mo iloru, ba tuwa aloala, Ba pila ka lipili, si kuliba, ke kulu, ba kala, ba le di ya high blood. Arinakotidi we, uko na ba pele che ya uya, di pili si te umoto ali. And then, ebema fello, ba tuko falaka malu eti, singa ba kala malu eti, pati ka ba kala kaala. So ri riawi, pléto mo mucho, moru, uretuixa. Kidi lele na ne, olele, ola, arinewa, ngarine pléke, ya oru karlema, moyo, narle ma, ka di jaradé. Ka mu ma hai. Re chobela pléke, e kulu, e wuzana, e karkakanan, re le ba balimi. Le mu ahoh, wa Mapela Food Nutrition Community Centre, rohonosa plala, le ba dinama ba pi. Mo ahoh, utlo tuxa, chabasi, ka muho ka, baba dilan, ka fasali mpopo. Ki bila re se, emeli mpopo fe la, re emeti, Province, ka muho ka. Eh, radio moren, te na, ri di ran, e, e ka tuxa le, ma fasali ma woa, ha wute. Afrika ka bupa. So, re a le wo ha. Herika hono uko na di funding. Finel estene, asine fancy, asine mu ahoh. Re a chobela, funding. Re a itoka, ene, re muha pe, fo ba nenba re na. Re chobela yona training, training skills. Cha timo, ekan le rubonche, arinete ewu. Oru hono utoma havozi, ma tomo, oru hono ubuna di buna, je di, no tuxa ba tuwa, to bolela ngawona. Ba tuwa ba holi lewa na. Kialé wo.
Thank you very much. My name is Lisiva Francisema. I am very happy that parliament is came to our home today. And I am from Mualakwena, in Mapela, in Asema. And I am a farmer. I am a farmer. And our produce support poor people and even children who no longer have parents. And we serve many areas, like Mukopani and Mashashani. So all we need is support. We also stand to say we support the bill. And I just hope that our contributions fall onto the right ears. So we, we, a lot of people are sick in our communities. Elderly people suffer from high blood. And they do take medications. And some of them are forced to take medications on hungry stomach. So what we do is to make sure that we produce food and support and feed the nation. So another challenge is that we do have a piece of land that we farm on, that is on our backyard. So we would like to extend, we would like to expand and be able to serve the whole province. Please help us with a lot more land. We also need some fence, we do not, we need some building and also some training in farming. Thank you.
Kili mesas chava. Kili mesas chavamo, kuto, ayama mo. Re chobela, kam, armoalema mo, pléke alima kenyani, retuka mashimo. Di komuza arinadi, tola di kola, di toka pulo. Le to, chobela, koru, re kaskala, retu xa, rso, no tuixa, tarakera, pléke ahole ma. Ra, di komuza arinadi, takera ahufula. Eh, ripla, di pudi, ripla, di 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 ka muho jar timo. Kar timo, hai ti. Herika kera ahole ma, ra kera, pléke ahore, di komuza arinadi, fuwe moho. Pana ma kwa, ma hao fi, ha, di komuza arinadi, ha, di ke rohu twa la, ko kola, sanso pala, mo tu ri, shezeka ma, ma ra, uri ti, bele, edu, ki tsala la, ka muho la. Ya swala, o, nsa, xe, towa, di patela, ma, herika bele, pléke nyana e kulu. Ba tuwa, ha kampela, ha, kasa kera, di kampala, komuza fuwe ma, di kampi. Ne, ko pala, pala wa. Refesa mo.
Greetings. My name is Simon Motena. I would like to say that we have a very small place where we do our farming. And our cattle do not have enough land to can graze. And they end up going into other people's farms. So we are asking the government to please provide us with enough land, so that our cattle can have enough space to can graze. And also the fencing as well. I thank you.
Tawela. Tawela. Na, kali, na ke te po, wa ga lami ni. Karata olawa, ene opportunity, ye lerifilingiona today, oto participator, kaga rega, this bill. Karata, o jo le jatawa, ya wore. Re a itavela. I bile, ra ra ta wona, i jo le twa pili, ka leba ka, leli fiti shao. Ka wani, si, si zamayshana, le our national development plan and also an integration between and cooperation within all sectors. Re kati leja, di pi karajeri fitilemo. All of those things that they are talking about are in different departments. And this is going to bring cooperation within them all. Karata, o fiti sha, chepe edifela, on my submission. Yamatomo, karata o jo le jali mchu, o tuwa kaa e, Kudu, ho wa wibi le sheji ba fitilemo la fasin. Ka wani, re a tiba, oru, some of us, we've been taken away from our roots or our places whereby it's even difficult to access those places just to do one thing, Comrade Chairperson, for a bella. Ona, ka fasaha slaresela, ko kula ra holo, na ba dilan mousse, na ba nduta di nonani. Ke hono uku shisha, five G A, ulalwa ngao mamutla, kaa yo, na mara ke, utaki wa ona. Arsana saka se. I wake up in a sad reality whereby, for me to even go to those places, I'm scared, Comrade Chairperson. I am not scared because of today, there is a huge boat that is sitting there with, I don't even know that machine, but I am sure that that is a machine gun. It's louder than even my voice. But, Comrade Chairperson, I'm more scared because the moving of our time today. I may wake up tomorrow, there is a mall on top of my grandmother's bones, and someone doesn't know. That is the sad reality that I wake up on too. And this is the message on my first submission, that this bill, it will give us a light and participation for that. Consideration. Kualo wucho, ra la, wa ka mucho, wa wore na kannedi, le seritla, wonar, la fita, dun di di. My second submission, I forgot to mention, Comrade Chairperson, I'm from Watetu in Mukopani. Is the what that is in town, the economical hub. As we are sitting with the table that is showing beautiful mountains, to indicate that we've got plenty of water. Water which is source of anything, from life to electricity. But there is people that have contracts that we don't even, or our grandmothers don't even have knowledge of. Re a chobela. Ra gaso jam, meti, abana bas kukune, rasa zévi, mangelu ya awo, na urajuang, renala mangelu ya awore na, ma ai, kiatamisha. Di kwenya. Eh. Ma barangwa, kialé wo. That is my submission.
Thank you very much, my name is Tepo Tlamini. I also wish to, I'm happy with the opportunity that I was also being given to participate in this, in this hearing. I stand to say I support the bill. And I am also happy that this bill is in line with the national development plan. And this bill is going to make sure that there is unity, there is cooperation amongst the sectors of government. And and then now, another thing is that back in the days, we used to, I used to go with my late granny to a particular place where we would say our prayers. But unfortunately, that place today, I cannot even go there. I'm even afraid to go there today. That place is called a private place. When you walk past there, you just see a security guard carrying a machine gun. So another sad thing is that tomorrow, you might wake up to a very big mall on the graveside of your grandmother. So I am from Watetitri, in Mopani. Le wona, le filoleke, le filolele wotuku du, re towa arineli meti. Eh, wame sa utu ya ke, oru, re no, utuwa cha chilele wu, wa kobaré, wone leka, kampani, le yel, oru, ituere, eh, kontraka, eh, eh, ya meti. Ulu ko, oru na milem utuwar, samatze wenga, anu tla, mo ka wore na, atla, rubachogore. Meti, a, a ka fasera ta olu, ya gawa. Kialé wo.
Tawela. Kialé di vedi sha, weta bela ka muho ka, le si chava ka muho. Na ke le ta wu muho ina, ke zo ko bela bela. Bela bela, local municipality. Apilia matomo na kinyo ku diire, bifokizwa la bela mode na leadership. Ke question oru, elerifa, di, di manuels. Rso la wala, ro, ro, na le ba wa ngara, zanasu, oloka, otsuwa na ke. So, tenzelitra u, di, di diire oru, baba bakono wa la ka soto, baba bakono wa la ka Afrika nsi, baba bakono wa la ka i. Because of, never never, English, and then, aloma, go, go, ma, bakono di wa. And batwa, ke bo na banan di problem, esiria so fe taraina, because, tina, we are still young. So next time, when you are coming to us, you must prepare yourself. Kadi lozé so kede, I'm sorry for that. And, apa, ke nyo ku le wata apa, bene, ka question oru, agriculture is very much important to us. Ke question oru. Agriculture is very much to us, because we've got everything from agriculture. Ne, erka, erka everything from agriculture. So you must, you must take us into consideration. Bonané, erko bo utu, le, na ba agriculture, le ba len, le ba len claim komishé, er claimadi lande zale. Di official zare, zale, le di official zale na. Ne, batya, di lande zare, na ba di fa wa twa wa sa, di no ngoso. Orasu, tinaru, so di lozé so tes. The so people na na, nda crime, of, awanale nde, ma, dos people, banadili land. Na ken di we, a practical example, kinali plaza. Ne, elongor, kiya kura holoak, kobe la bela, ko plati yes. Ne, plaza, lo ba fili wa tuwa elongor, de Ne, plasela va filewa twa elongor de don belong there. Mani ene bafa department dalen. But wa l'plasela ashiri iridentent, wa tawana len to do. I thank you, please help me.
Greetings. Uh, my name, my name is, uh, Tabo Mukwena. I'm from Belavela, local municipality. Uh, my first request to you, uh, parliament is that, uh, whenever you invite us here, please ensure that, uh, your documents are in different languages. Uh, may they be in English, Soto and Africans. Because some of us cannot read. We have, uh, grandies here who also cannot read. So, please take that into consideration. Now, uh, I would like to say that agriculture is very important to us. But the problem is that, uh, your, uh, officials, uh, officials from the department of agriculture take our land and give it to other people, which is wrong. I have a farm which was given to wrong people. So, please help us in that regard. I thank you.
Ke kopa belin tate abuwa. Haleka tusa ndatemukwena molala mufa. Bili ya buo ya runaya se soto. Katswa satebe hori di te.
Uh, can you please help by giving, uh, Mr. Mukwena a bill which has been translated into a Soto? In case he doesn't know that, uh, it is there.
Eh, tovela, tovela vasu.
Reto la pele wa twa baaholo. N'datemukwena wutla obulet mwelebi obuela hai.
Thank you very much. Let's proceed.
Eh, n'akintatemule fe. Kizwa kwa twa Belavela, local municipality. Renele agriculture. Anama ofu mola rdu la mola. N'akina di kumu. Se fifty. Eh, na di na ko pleke ye, bar kia municipality mara arpatela. Di forty rand, forty rand. Arzive forty rand de la arpatela man for di kumuzare. Erbaba ka ere eighty. Mo di komunze. So, retoka pleke. Di kumuzar na dia twaala. Di twaala kan nete, 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 nete. Eh, na utuwa mo agriculture ya mo fandisi. Ke five minutes of fitla mo. So, di kumuzar na watuwa wanzu. Adile kanili di kumuzaa makoa. Ya kaika kanyana itama ten tau. Ya hai itama fifteen tau. Kalava kala eh. Reina, mo agriculture ya mo hai, mo bela bela mola. Ote ana felori wana ke kobe la limfenfuru. Esosokonuriki di kumuzar na di, di bianeli, le praise. Awa, uta, uta warrieta, rieta. Ana wena no setele, ke setele fifty yes. Ke tumile uruaka forty-five yes. Na ana five yes eh oti. Five yes yo yothi. Akiboni mo kia. So, ne kobe la le, le ridire. Le, le ridire le, eh, pleni eh unwe kulu, kulu, kulu. Ana wena kiwalela mo. Li tu, le impone moti vileri. Rea bela bela. Re nyago goba narli kria pleke in five weeks. Isenguru ruto ema ba twa mo dimu. Apela remishi. Se so ngababe. Ba ke kulu ba borina ba twa di baba hulu, hulu. Ba twa si di plaza. Foro ma bota ana mo dimulemo. Ofi tava bela bela. Ki di plaza, kachi gule ki di kebire sefe. Ki bu tava kwenaa. Ki bu jamunati. Kura arsa utu si sa uranari reina. Sanse renne le pleke bukae. So, se so holo, holo ba twa di. Erilebe leman. Wana ke tava cheng uwile ki atofala. Wa e ke sakwete tuzu. Mutuwa mo holo, 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 holo. O tushaya vya. Apa ke khae, ke khae le plekele ba twa di. So, ra lo kobe la. Molau. Rea malo. Or, rieta kanitwa eh kulu, kulu, kulu. So, rotula lele la, raka lewa le ba twa di. Baba ankeva cha. Bakona goba na uru mo, o, o etala. Se so hulu. Resadya ke ba tla oesan fam. Ya di ku. Ite eh fama di ku kobe la bela. Nerle fifty ni mo yona. Itu eh, me kitu, aisabe reka. Eh, apa apa. Areki implikele wile kiala wa. Ke se rinchi. Mara, karla impona oru ya hule. Itan, le bata meli. Le bolele le, bayta pele, bar na ba bela bela oru. Ar tushen batwa. Ana wena, wone le famo eh unwe mo. Ner suoh, barke ner suoh. N'giri vitu akafrikansi. Ner suoh. Ke famo ya dina muni. Ne kileka kanyana ke tamo opeta dina muni se. Reso wusha ke mutuwa mo. Wanu, 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 wanu. Wa bo raaholo. Or, asai ne mola oru ne. Eh, kia dumela oru feme kia ba twa di balen. Onna ana mo dimulemo. N'kalewa nchan, di di pa mpiri di tueri. That's why ke re, mbitse. Le ri mbitse, strek, strek. One by one, ritle mo, rto narbolele. Wan naralebo tatabo boso. Meve, rekatu se. Kiala wa.
Thank you very much. My name is Moses Mulife. Eh, I am from, uh, Belavela, local municipality. And, uh, I, I am also involved in agriculture. I have fifty cattle. Eh, but unfortunately, we do not have, uh, a piece of land where we can keep our, our cattle. We are renting a piece of land with, uh, other people who also have, uh, who also are under the same con, situations as mine. We pay fifty rand each. And, uh, and, uh, our, our cattle are multiplying. So, we need, uh, uh, an ex, extra hectares of, for our cattle to be kept and for them to graze. So, another thing is that, uh, we have the, the, the challenge with the pricing of cattle. Our cattle are priced only ten thousand rands while white, white people's cattle are priced fifteen, fifteen thousand rands. So, eh, please help us, uh, eh, resolve this, uh, eh, 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 challenge. Please, eh, eh, bring a plan. Eh, we have been, uh, complaining about this for, forever. Please, maybe you can be able to help resolve this, eh, challenge. And then another thing is that, uh, our, eh, grandfathers and grandmothers are no longer, eh, farming. Eh, you see, all those, those pieces of land that are for farming. Eh, today, there are game reserves there. There are places called Chabakwena, Ijabonati, they are all built there. So, there's no farming on our land. So, eh, another thing is that, eh, we would like to appeal with you to, to please, eh, eh, pass this bill. Otherwise, we are going to, to fight with you. And another thing is that we used to have a poultry farm, eh, fifteen of us. Eh, but then now, eh, it's, 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 it's gone. It no longer, it no longer exists because we do not have the, the support. And one other thing is that, uh, there is a farm, eh, that produces oranges. That farm belongs to our family, but then now it has been taken away from the, the family. I used to work there as a young man. Thank you, as a little boy. Thank you very much.
Eh, eri ge simulega, o duwe di sa tafule. Mo etapili. Eh, chair, chairperson. Ki ama fapele hule na. Ke re, ke duwe di sa apelle, madam speaker. Ki tsa lena ko watleven o le palale o selika. Si fitu ho LQ forty-five. Ya, eh, kiala wa, madam speaker. Eh, eringere, ge simule ya. N'akizwako le fatila selika. Ke mutuwa ge simulute. Okokoa nyama logo oru ridire ko pare tifi. Eh, mpa fe la rasantere, re sokola kadilo te di tikahune hule bu tokati romarara na road. Ya no. Eringere, le fatila re na la selika. Ke le fatile nkarin le, le landlock, le twa lehile. Eh, haule beleti ka kulo ya lona. Medzi eh hulela tuwati center. Eh, ira hure. Harina le fatileri ka kona unhu urua loli ma molona. Momewa hengetan urar tabe medzi ifitile tuwati mitele nkapwa. Kamu raho ke di plaza, sa di pharmacy, sa skua. So, ya no rona, resontiro hulele kai re le mozi. Ri, ridirisaa timo ele ya khae, bar engi subsistence farming. Eh, lorili ya no, a, aisabe reka. Haule be la re na le ploto ta medzi ta forty by eight. Unalele sakaka muhar. Uwata udira tiwa na mira. Uviala di roots. Kakotimu unale two hectare. Agere, eh, two hundred meters by hundred. So, mo ri simulang, eh, agrifarm ya ro. Ke tamailaka okopa komising ebana le. Akere selalele ke kom, ke communal land. Which is communal land har ownisip. Ke tamailaka okopa, eh, di timu te tar. Or bar adime di timu te. Ka hori, baro kasi reke, ke communal land. We ya di milue fe. Hauna kwa nguwa rekalemantee. Ya no, se sunse twayan ke hori. O tli ra di bushis. Ake, wa fence ta hap. Wa bawa boharamedi hona mo. Moso ososiku pile momo we. Me momo ono, abu e kamu raho snu, u, u bu na onamo. Abu are, kinekwa ta obereki sa timue ya me. Ya no, hauna kwarente. Ner kopa hori, le, 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 le ritu se, re create mafilo. Arka kona kuitimela mo. Na ele aru na straight. And then hap. Haule belela, twa na di timu te nete. Hadiya fence. Ka katela yele ring, eh, litisa, eh, preservation ya, ya, ya land and development. Ke, 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 karata hori ke re. Ke, ke, i support. Ka hori homwi. Ekabu seta, eh, hori di timu te nete. Li di kampate oru fu di sa mozo. Bi ahele twasin. Oru rukona oli makarato. Se so u hap e go hori. Mo, kobra. Omrau after nineteen ninety-four. Utakwen. Eh, wone, wunale, eh, forestry police. Mo le fatila ro. And then haru uta hona no. Where is na forestry police? Kotsa nerigma range ya mozi. Eh, bar no, hauna budget. Ya no, ye imkon sa horu puso ye ifitile. Was, was caring ka, ka, kale fati dan puso yerilemfo yo. Ka hori, ya no, di kampadi ki di, ki di patafe la utuwa na ka foto ka kwa. Di timu adin, adi ahele tiwa. A, aosa kona ulima. Horu ulima rekopa di funds. Ona banu ri eh me because arina, arina sente. Ba twa peleka di three-fifty. So, rekaskono twa le ta le timuere, re, 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 reka ele te kaya ona. Ya hulema di jalo, li urua di porfor. Ya ka ki bua ke rekamu raho harina. Ki di pharmacy, fama eh wa le, eh, owna pleke fitangre na road. Marara na renseka ra di, ra di ploto, sa di, sa di square, sa di square. So, ke le, le hap re. Hunale di plaza te ri di, te ri di, te ri di claima. Te boharamo laro na badutinko oto. Anano hunna ba twa bawa nguwa bana li di chelate. Ba di le di, 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 baruadi komuka molale. Re na, since me wa ka, atoka fala, two thousand and six. Ba claimile, le today le nasanteki pala ku, ku, kuwa mohela claimye. Mo uwile ripu pile, re le mukato wa, eh, bakone wa muke rom. Oru re luwela di plaza te oto te te. Ka saite leo. Se di wuse tiwile di na li di mine. Ka faharre, remisi te mine ka harre. Oru saite lo ro, osainela gema. So, me uwile mula wolu utisang. Oka kona rutu se. Kiala wa.
Re kopa, baaholo haribuwa. Rea lelo hori babamba sense ba twa obua. Lehe lo rudi ntsadi botsho kwa. Are leken wo di sobo kanyi.
May I please, eh, appeal to all speakers? Eh, please, eh, remember that, uh, others must also get a chance to speak. Even, eh, even, even, even if you have quite a number of points to raise, eh, be considerate. Remember that other people need to speak.
Eh, greetings. Eh, my name is Edward Lebody. I'm from what, eh, from Selikasi Fithulo. Eh, I stand here as somebody who lives in the same ward with the speaker eh, from the Selika community. Eh, I am the one who initiated the process of funding for our cooperative. Eh, we are currently working the Selika land. We've got a couple of plots. And when we analyze our plots there, we are unable to expand because our plots are surrounded by residential areas. And at the back, we have, eh, farm schools. So therefore, we are unable to expand. The plots are very small, hence we need to expand. Eh, the other challenge that we have is the fact that the land that we are currently using, we have actually been loaned. We did not buy it. We are not allowed to buy the land. And the problem is the fact that now we are utilizing our own funds to utilize the land. So, as a result, we feel that we are actually running at a loss because it's not our land. Eh, we would like the committee to assist us to access our own land. Eh, the land that we are currently using is not even fenced. Eh, after nineteen ninety-four, there was what is called the forestry police. Currently, the forestry police is not, eh, in place anymore. And when we ask why we do not have a forestry police, we are told that there is no budget for such. So, I don't understand. Does it, it seems as if the previous government was caring because they provided the forestry police. There is also the issue of the land claim where people who put the land, land claims are not, are currently not occupying the land. It is occupied by, occupied by people who did not, eh, apply for that, eh, put up a land claim application. Eh, as a result, we are currently in the process of fighting for that piece of land which is currently used for mining. Thank you.
Right. Eh, tomega o duwe di shaa, leadership. Slochile. Let's shava say. So, ra duwe di shaka muka. Eh, molau. N'akia o duwe. Kao, kao teha. Eh, kali viso gi Alfred Macaffula from, eh, Belavela. Eh, kistetile, di, kikino dile, lo se few. Se, se rdi face andi, di problem se few, se rdi face angoba Belavela. Eh, wia gamkolo rubeze utwa matomo uranaku re thombe. So, that's why I'm saying it, or e, kistetile se few. Problem matomo. Matomo re... Ma tomu reface ang. Ki, eki wana owne day-to-day basic eh. Raneli ba na ba manchi eh. Baru ba tseba angba, zatseba metro kilaitile eh. Kamu agricultural eh 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 diplomas and those kind of eh em education eh 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 high education. So, this problem reface ang ya wana. Eh, ke hore, abato vaikai. Ebatwa mula snuwa bagra eh 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 that diploma, ya 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 wana eh department of eh agriculture. So anyway, in short, abato vaikai that eh number one. That's my big problem that I'm facing, eh ibile personally answering. So, problem number two. Raneli lefazi le longor lineari owners, maybe private owners eh. Kamkoya gamkolo tseba, re wana angatting, sincei rola re talifale, renar sala ba manyan utwa kana kula kan. So, right eh. Narukopela, Department of Agriculture. Eka tusaya. Katava ya eh eh lefazi le longor ali- ali nesilo ona development ya. Markidi, tsona di di farms, ali developmenti. And ra wana every now and again, no re, moa ona tulepile, lemewa, lemewa. So, ke ona mora kaidira rekavani developmenti. Ya something eh, ya utusa baana. And then le developmenti wu hapen ya in. Ar- arlevelling eh tabaya livestock, livestock. Yarutwaya ko Belabela kwa, esetownship, small township. Unalewa ruwi, barui balu banana. Like ma le mang, ke- 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 jarata feela. Banale le ruu lahula lahula lahula. Nada tumu fetowalela mobra, moso eshalena utwa Belabela. Oli lega unale fifty cattle. Ager, asahale, ele ya on. So, kilo zerdi face ang on a day-to-day basis. So, livestock wela, kidi pudi keni- keni, arlevelling to rukopela le na Department of Agriculture. Le le tuseng asibela bela fe. Mar na ki walela ka kuku twa nguti. So rukopela le ya ona, ke wewe di problem. Le tuseng ona livestock problem ya ore, arneli ruu, ralabatu, arneli plake nyan. Plake ya teja, marinali owners. Elka tusana na kopane wana la- la tusan. Ke shornelu officia departmenti ona mo- mo districti monelstru mo. So, rukopela le ibile le tomekayon, bangwa bawa bawa ona monelstru. So, another problem is, agricultural in short, another problem is ya livestock, are educating ba tware ina le wana ba wana ba livestocko. Bawore ina eh, and then eh ready teacher eh how to handle loti, disaswaya ba twa wankamudi jarte watwa watwa and those kind of things. Lastly, lastly eh developmenti area. Are- 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 ke rukopela Department of Agriculture, National, please, leadership. Kala rukopela, ke wela wela ya ba ya development. Land di wewe bolezi ele ya ona meti oto ma ya ore eh eh lefazela le jagi. Ke- 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 kidi mining and then eh lady malls and what were, those are developments. And dibutokala to for employment and developing our country. So, hapap, ke rukopela, ralabelita be ya di- ya di- ya di eh more developmenti ya di eh eh di- 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 not diversity eh, sorry, the colleges.
Ra lebohan tawron.
Ta- 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 eh eh agriculture, please, thank you.
Batsoa di kikupile hurakeska khaulela mo tuhabuwa. Mara ke ko parli rituse, re sente re tlohola tamatsohama. I don't like it to interject as you speak.
Uh, greetings. My name is Alfred Macaffula uh from Belabela. Firstly, I would like to state that I support this bill. Now, um, we have a few problems in Belabela. And the first one is that there is so many kids who have matriculated. Some even have certificates in agriculture. But the problem is that after having graduated, they now become directionless, they do not know where to go. Now, we are asking the Department of Agriculture to help in developing the farms. And again, there is a problem of livestock in Belabela as the previous speaker had said. You'd find that a person has a lot of cattle. But the problem is that we do not have enough land to accommodate it. So, we are asking for help in that regard. Uh, the, or the third point. Uh, as it was mentioned, that a lot of land is consumed by mining and so on. Well, that is also a development in that it creates employment. And I would further like to ask for the building of agricultural colleges. I thank you.
Eh, du melang. Why me moki Joanna Shonwane from Watre in this municipality. Eh, I'm in full support of this bill because this bill is gonna make sure that eh there is eh food security in our country. And the, it- it aims to alleviate poverty. And also, well, those two eh those two eh objectives are- have been achieved. It means that eh our economy will- will grow. So, there's another issue eh which is very serious in our country. Eh, which is land invasion. Because we find out oru ona ba twa lora neighbor invader land, which is agricultural land. Then, ewa- ewa le problem because it poses a threat to food security. And then other thing eh 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 committee ya- 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 this bill is be- ke lebaga lawre. Eh, there is a lot of unutilized agricultural land. More especially by the white people. I'm not sure, oru maybe they are just keeping their land for their- for their- for their kids, for their kids, for their kids. Or maybe they just want to make sure that they have the power, their economy. So, there are a lot of unutilized land eh agricultural land, more especially in Falva there. Because eh if those land are not used, eh, it means oru regasibele eh eh unemployment and natural plans eh eba high. And then le tabaya food security eh, global eh threat. And then other thing oru, if rekavani problem ya food security in our country. Eh, it means that we'll have to import the jo from other countries. Then meaning oru eh globala- globala matata mole as a country. So, I fully support this bill eh, thank you committee.
Thank you very much, my name is Joanna Shonwana. I am from Watre. I fully support the bill eh. Kova kiri kitloka, kitteha, mla waka kanyo. Eh, mla waka kanyo wokaniti utlo tloka, odetefacha eh chirelejo ya di jo. Omee utlo hona wurtusha ofukacha wudi di, oba wutlu ki. Eh, omee rapen eh, sesu tlo tusha le ekonomi ya rinam, sesu tla tsa bo la ekonomi ya rinam. Eh, bialu. Eh, but tata welo giri lebo na sesunselo sesu tloka, sesu tva broku. Keta va ya gori batu ba ipenaga, kudu- kudu ba ipana ga, ele gori asina ga, ele gori ibecho kudula batu, ipa gina ele gori, ibecho gori goli melwe guyo ona. Eh, kaba kalagore se, sesu la eh kouzi kuta va ye ya chirelejo ya- ya di jo. Eh, bialu eh. Rea bona eh, di- ba twa manchi ba ipa yo ona, na gayana ye ya goli melab. Akitsebe mava kabo ona, msumwe mava kabo na ke gori eh ba na ba ba ona. Ba te ba- ba te ba- baru ge ba- kaba sepeje ba na ba ba ona. Ba shale ba ina le- le- le naa ga. Omee eh, tabaya ya- ya- ya tloka wa ya chirelejo ya di jo. Are ne tikfache ongore eh, ra ito direga. Kaba kalagore ka kwecha, re fitlema ya momwe longore, re ya di na re jedi we, re ya gora ga di jo, kialewo.
Eh, tawela, ki- alene woga, tekele woga tafula, eh tlen mamu tha. Utomo we, kaya ona reka ta ra kulega. Na ki Bolina Ledwaba, utwa lefazela strak water eh re. Itlolo le techa, mo, mola wa ne ngole tlen kawo na. Karata uvolela eh, volele ye ring. Renar itutishke ki mine. Wari- 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 u- u- urkushke kwa pila, wari chiya strak water eh. Wari tima naaha. Harina naaha. Eh ne, kamuris nenaha ka ona, retweje mashimu arina kwa pila. Ra buya, ra- bari- bari- waribiya strak water eh, mo utoka ang. Meti, mo utoka ang eh di jo. Hariji, rebula kitlaala. Eh, zale, re- re bile, dirile mukatana warinawa MPO. Mara harina naa, mo reka- reka diela ang eh di jalo mo- 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 mo ona. Zale, beru kubela gori muso. Ager, urutuse, uru bolela leba mine. Mine wa platna. Uri, mine wala wa platna ma ka re geri na ba matomo ba kututishi. Ager, urifena- urifena naa ga, mo re le renar reka itiela ang di jo. Ra rampara ra- ra itiela di jo ka, ba na ba rena- ba na ba rena ababereki. Le rena ra- ba tsoa di ba rena ba toko feje. Zale, beru kubela oru, inge le re bolele le ba- ba twa mbaini. Ager, ba rituse, ka mashimu arina, ai loring, ra- ra toka ga juale. Uri reko no goli ma, reli ma le ba na ba rena, ba kiri ya u- 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 ya. Ibele ya mwwe ya gula te la. Rukopela, le gori eh, golo wa, rebula kitlaala, retoka jo na vivanti cha oru. Le renor di kate niya na jere, reka itiela njo na. Le re- reko no- reko no gori ritusha. Impa re geri ya wenyani, niya na bo, uritlabenji ba na ba rena ba ya. Uri le meshuma niya na kawo ra ba na li ona. Mutomo ka na di- di kati ni jetlabenri di dia, ba ka geri ya meshum. Zale, ki mo giri ki- kialukopela lele tafula, terise kele nsebe. Harina le twandi tre yes. Re duti most strak water eh, hariji, hari- hari le ma, harinwe. Uri, riobaba, ba twa udu odu la feela. Zale, re- re kubela oru, inge le re, volele le ba mbaini. Ba mbaini ba refena, le renar reko no gori, jadi chaba jedi we, re le ma. Zale, ka he, re niya ka goli ma, tawela.
Uh, greetings. My name is Bolina Ledwaba from an area called Strak Water. Now, I would like to say that we will probably benefit due to your visit. Uh, we have actually been removed from an area called Kwa Pila to Strak Water by the mine. And we left our land there. We have been settled in this new place called Strak Water where we do not have food, we don't have land, and we don't even have water. We are starving there. We can't even do farming. We would like to plead with the government to speak with the mine people to provide us with land so that we can do farming. We need our farms to produce food. And we also need a funding so that we can be able to feed our children. Maybe with the farming that we would be doing, we would then be able to provide jobs for our children. We've been staying in Strak Water for twenty-three years now. And we are just inactive, we are doing nothing. Uh, may you please speak with the mine people to provide us with land? I thank you.
Eh, tawela, karata gudumelisha ba tuka muka. Karata gudumelisha bialu, leba etapi le kialewo. Ele konele ki kuwa ke tabile kudu. Kaba kalagore, watsiba ke leba ma kantlaro, elgo ra zeni gana juale. Ai lengo ra gana juale ba rebucha di taba, ndengo lengo ba rebucha. Ke halare na kamuhatloa ikri- akrika etama ra sa uku mani. Ki fomu re di bona di sora ki ba ba marasela, ki hetta. Eh, le koni ki kuwa ke leba kantlaro tlin. Moso munka ona, reka felele cha, kaba kalama fulu falu, aru na ka rebasa di ripipile. Renya ka goli ma, kaba kalagore. Gana juale di leka muka di atura. Ba na ba rena ba bereki, ba na ba rena ba tadesko. Ba na ba rena ba di ra ba, na ba slava na. Ba na ba rena ba aru pa ki ba na ba di kontra ka, rena ba soa di re sora ba tataka ra malaka. Refe pa di tukule jeli gori adine ko papa, ba na re ba tsebe. Kaba kalagore, ba ba la kitlaala. Rukopela gori muso oru, na konye re le gomogu ya nae. Ibele aridje ki di somu, rea ma reka ma ike misa di, le kuwa la la re ba la la, reka ma ike misa di. Arisi es te lo. Rukopela oru kanana kwanere le gomogu ya nae. Rukopela oru muso ra shoka me la ba sa di ba ilgo oru, ba ike misa di mi je. Kaba kalagore konele ba sa di ba ilgo oru, butze butze. Abana kana es te lo, sabo na ke lele mi feela. Renaba sa di ba ilgo oru, ipupile, rena ka jo la pele. Rena ka le gori, muso re gola bu so ku, se re sidira ang, re sidira ka ne te le tsepo. Nan te le gori ki mo chashanu le ona. Ke chashanu ya gori, ha mo tsa soa di fomu. Atje foma eh fe wa, iha utka ba mufa. Kaba kalama hadi. Mo hadi ra olime, mo hadi ra na le ma ike misa di. Nasaka le mo go so na, karata jo la pele, kaba kalagore, karata secha. Ke kubela oru, kase seba kase mo ke le mo go so na se. Ke kubela oru, ha di fomu ni tlen ma kantlaro keshu. Oto ma le koni ka kalo, le re fele, leka muso le re fe. Ke na ADSA ke rena projects. Mara kubela ma kantlaro le di mear. Project se ki ba go ke rena. Ma kantlaro, mu kantlaro ona le mear ona. Asin ja seka mo project se niye ke rena. Kaba wa ka, ai le gora seba di, na le ba ba. Na mo ke le mo go on, mo- 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 mo ke le ngwa na mo. Ke niya ga oru ma kantlaro. Hele uko ni kaba uku mani sesu ingamula, mala gona gamula. Ba si sheba tu, ba skaba si fi la. Eh, fa ba atu, fa ba nemaga, ba da jo la pele, ga mo go so ona. Ke kubela oru muso aru na, na ke rena projects. Ke itomi leka di sixteen ija, February twandi sixteen. Ke na ADSA, agi tusha ki fokon. Mara ma kantlaro ateni gana juale, kugusha uru tla, uru tla seba oru, udira ga gamula project se niye la. Ke moa reka project se la, tapen we ametisa ka momorau. Ya we ka ka mobi. Mara ki moa aru, mara ki tushua ya ga mesaw. Agi te bo naa bu tataki. Ba twa keshu, aril segera lebele na, arilebele lengo secha ba sar na oru. Se jo le mpele, ba sa di kaba ipupile ba lebele le juale kaba atu. Kialewo, ke na bole na mele, ke jo la mala gue, kialewo.
Eh, thank- thank you very much, my name is Bolina Melo. Eh, today I am very happy. I'm very happy that our councillor, eh, what he informed us about is actually materializing now. He told- he told us about this gathering and then now we are gathered, I'm very happy. And now eh eh, it- it's very sad eh in our areas because information is not shared to everyone. You will see people completing forms eh for support, for financial support and any other kind of support from the- from- from- from the Department of Agriculture. But some of us, we do not receive those forms. Eh, I have- I've been- I have been waiting for this opportunity eh for- for- for people who are connected with the Department of who are connected with the Department of Agriculture to visit us. So now eh, we, we as eh, 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 granis, we do have our children and our children have children and eh, our children are not employed and it becomes our responsibility to raise our children as children. And then now eh, eh, I myself, I am a female farmer. Eh, I would like to appeal to our government to please support female farmers, even those who are involved, involved in our cooperatives. Eh, I'm really against this thing of sharing information eh, to, to only people that you like or people that you know. Everybody must receive eh, eh, information. I have been in, in, in the project that I'm running, I've been running for the project for eight years. And eh, eh, councillors come and go and, 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 and nobody has ever bothered to give me information on the support that other people are receiving from the, the, the department. But then this time around, the councillor told me about this meeting, that's why I hit the call to come here. And then now eh, eh, since sixteen February twenty sixteen, it has been eight years now. Nobody has been helping me with anything. Thank you very much.
Uh, greetings. My name is Nzako Ngobeni. I'm from Falwater, Watre of the Mutimulamohopo municipality. And I represent Mawakani Youth Organization. Um, we as Mawakani Youth Organization took a consensus to agree with the bill as it will help unlock a lot of doors in terms of business and job opportunities. As our country is currently facing a lot of high rates in unemployment. So this bill will help our community members who aspire to develop businesses in farming and then also provide job opportunities for many of our people who are sitting and hope unemployed. Um, it'll also address issues of price hikes in terms of fruits and vegetables. Uh, it's very expensive to maintain a he- a healthy lifestyle in our country because it's expensive to buy the food. And you find that some families end up succumbing to eating unhealthy food because that's what they can afford. And then we've got organizations that are currently trying by all means to help aid the youth in terms of being involved in agriculture and farming. But from training the youth in terms of plant and animal production, they do not have land whereby they can put what they learned in practice. Um, the plea that we have as, as an organization is that with this bill, there should also be principles that will help our farmers prioritize organic farming. Because what we've discovered is that a lot of the food that are in the market currently are not GMO free. They are genetically modified and that makes our people more sick. So our plea is that there should be a priori prioritization of organic farming so that our people can get healthy and natural food. Thank you.
Uh, ki du merisha, lena lakake Nzako Ngobeni, ke toko Watre ko Falwater. Eh, samato mo ki tla ra ta, o salo sa gorin ke teha mala wa ga ga nyao. Ka re ilo gorin, o ta re ho la gudu. O ta solamishomo, mo go li di ho, eh, di ho ba cha eh, di huego. Me, o ta tushe ga pe, ilo go lwan cha na, le go sa klo ga, ga di teko cha di jo. O ta tushe gudu ka re ilo gorin na ga eh ya rena, etlo ga ena le toke go ya mi xoomo. Ki wa ki salse ga pe gorin. Ho tlo ga go li, wi ma gudu gorin mo cho, aje di yo jeu di na go le pepo. Ka re ilo gorin di jo di tlo ga di bija gudu monare. Me, re tlo ga rena le ba tata jo jo gorin. Eh, ba na ga ba ko ne, o ka ku cha tso, tsa so ma ba pile che cha, cha temo. Ka re ilo gorin, ho tlo ga go na le toke go eh ho lo ya naa ga. Me, hm, wi pile ti juale na, ke gorin, ho tlo ga go, lebele la taba eh ya gorin eh, di jo di jule juwe ka, se la ya maleba, kantla li chumisho ya di kemikalé. Ka re ilo gorin, eh, ma fe lo, di kemikalé che di fe le cha di ba ga ma luete. Zale, go bo so ga gudu gorin ba cho ba ku je di jo, jeu eh le ngo re ke cha maleba, kelewa.
Ta we la, good morning. My name is Simon from Mualakwena municipality, Watundi nine. Eh, kelewa ga today, o kopana le parliament deko no. Eh, ki hala ki bucha buchoe, ki sa kumane ansar. Zale, be reko pe la, o bucha parliamento gorin na. He, renar di farmers, re apply la le fe lo. Why let ya na wait lelim for ansar? Sometimes two years to five years. But the miners ready la, do reko pe la le fe. Within six months, secha ba gril report, even secha ba tuwile, liin klo cha re na. Secha ba tuwile, lima bita re na. Ba fa di miners chance eh, gorin, ba honau, wa yepa me wa inia go. Ha be ge ho la be ke se ba gorin, hala ba re ne, li ko mo, le jo temo. Mamta temo ya le ko no, ki di gold. Renar arasa na taba, rena ma frica woroa, a di miners. Zale, ake se ba rena mu thomo ika kabakalawo re na, rena mu thomo ngo re li di, di farmers eh. Ri ko mo chi gudu na. Why are they act na? Like people who are living in hillbrows, people who are taking the land, gangani, scotter camps. Ba ho buka na mala wa ipu pile, ba fita wa e cha le fe le la ba du. Ba se ba gorin, ba tlo cha na wait se le gorin, etle ba honau tushe o mala, ho wa. Ba tlo niya ga di loa ra orin di ba bolele, na go ya sepe. After two years, three years, le fe le le la le approve eh. Mara renayole ka ba li, arri je le she it. Mu thomo re ko mo chi gudu re na ba tuwa keshu. Why are na ra sa imeleli? Ba ta ra teha, di loa la je, agri for, eh, fora me go na mo. So ki ka muho ro, so nji ba tushe ga go. So mamta re, kelewa ga parliamente le go. Zale, ku, eh, bucha ga ma fe lo. Ri tila ken, re lo teha eh, bileki. Na le towa ne, o tole replya. For this bill, ipasi je, to be an act. Le ka ba la wa ka ma ra me wa yemithan. Kelewa.
Uh, thank you very much. My name is Simon Ramutla, from Mualakwena municipality. Eh, eh, I'm, I'm very happy that today I got an opportunity to, to meet eh, in person with parliament. I have been waiting for this opportunity. There is a question that, uh, it's a burning question. I've been, I've been wanting to ask this question for, for the longest of times. So now, my question. Why eh, does it take this long eh, sometimes five to ten years eh, to approve eh, 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 land for farming? To give people a piece of land to say, okay, now you are, you are allowed to farm on this piece of land? Eh, it's very sad that eh, with mining, eh, a mine can make an, an application eh, for, for a piece to, to, to mine on a piece of land and within six months, they are given permission. And within eh, that, but that same six months, they are given permission to relocate people and graves. And in, in just six months, eh, there's no one there and the mine has started with its operations. And then, uh, maybe it's because that we as farmers are, are quiet people eh, be, because eh, I see what's happening in the country. People just go to a, a piece of land, occupy the piece of, piece of land and then build their, their, and then develop a squatter camp or an informal eh, eh, area there. And then, uh, forcefully doing so. And then, uh, in no time, you'll see that land being developed eh, and then, and people being placed properly. And then that land eh, eventually changed into eh, eh, residential eh, eh, area. And then, uh, yes, we do support eh, the bill. Yeah, as, as we support the bill eh, I want to ask a question. Eh, we are here discussing the bill and I know that we are still going to process the bill. Are you going, is there gonna be eh, some sort of a report back whereby you're gonna come back to us to say, this is how we went about the bill and this is the, the final document? Thank you.
Ta we. Eh, na ki na, tsapowali kutoa ke tokele eh, Mohopo. Eh, mara ke tokele mo place in ye nguwe ba bija eh, Dekar Fontaine. Ka mo ke niya na Mohopo. So, o tataba ki na le bo na. Ki o tataba gorin eh, place eh, ki rdu la mo yo na, ki place eh, le ngo re no eh, ki bela ke jo go, mo we yo na. Eh, li ndadewaka, the late ma, the late father. Who eh, abele hu ka bo nineteen twenty-nine, mark salo go na mo place in ye. So le ho aliwe, le re saje, le re saje je eh, a piece. Ya, plus, a pi, pi, eh, a piece of land, mo place in yo na ye. But, harnatetli di di, and then eh, haruwa ni, se la eh, ndadewaka atuko feji. And a place ona ke niya ne, ki na li di homu, and a ko mo cha na ki di rinchi. So, be na eh, be reko pe la fe la ngo re no. Be leka sin tushe, leka sin tushe ngo re no eh, nka ku je juang eh, place ayewe. Kabakalawo re ngo re no eh, haruwa ni. Eh, haruwa ni tu cha. Eh, ta we, le ona eh, asma thomo ni bi leki, ki, 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 bolela, li ndadoo la le ngo ma thoma le ngo wa. Wa, wa bu se ba o tataba ka, and na, ha ona nti enki le ba tushe ga yo na ne. And then, salaka taga la le bo na eh, na wa si ba ka e juang. Mara ha ona nti enki le ba tushe ga yo na, na be ke no reko pe la ngo re no, be leka sin tushe ngo re no. Eh, ana mo rdu la nka, o ka re ki salo go na mo place in, mara e fe la. Nda eh, monoa lo ho au, haruwa ni tu cha la, gorin, ko gorin kanu, ki duti mo ga taba ya habele ju fe. Ye naa ga anya, ki uya ka orin arza ma eh, mara re no be le go re ki narha ne la mo. Kabakalawo re eh, onkirela na mo we, ki bela ke juang na mo we, li ndadewaka o be le juang na mo ga nineteen twenty-nine. So be reko pe la ngo re no, lena, le le mo, be leka sin, leka sa ke ga, ga soli she ne nguwe ya gorin. Leka, ka muho leka tushe anga go na ngo re no, ki ku je place o ka re. Ake na homu, ki na li di homu, ke reko pe. Thank you.
Uh, greetings. My name is Tsapo Lehuzo, from a place called Dekar Fontaine, just outside Mohopo. Now, I have a problem because I am staying in a farm. A farm which I was on in too, together with my late father. Now, in that farm eh, we have been assigned a piece of land to can stay in. But, the new farmer, who is now occupying that land, having found us, already stayed there. He wants to evict us. And the problem is that I have a lot of cattle. So I am pleading with the government to please help me to can eh, have that place under my ownership. Because I am now staying there forcefully, since eh, the, the new farmer and myself are not in good terms. Yes, I am actually pleading for your help, since the farmer wants to evict us from that place. I thank you.
Ta we. Ki du merisha parliamente, ki du merisha toka bu par. Na ki, matuwa ni Samuel Mapeka. Wa ko lefasen la ga Mukopani, mo lefasen, mo ba renki ma lepetleke bileche. Renar ifulu eh, le fe lo na temo, refaki ho xi, teka no ya thirty-five to forty hectares. Ifulu eh, le fe lo le. Zale, ri le raboncha na le ba ma ini, recha para faru e ki me ba ini. Me ba ini me bedi, iling englo Americani, Le Ivan Plus. Zale, Ivan Plus eh, ija, englo ija mesri mo li, le fe lo le le mo go. Zale, re wangi je rari, people shall share, arri abele na ri tushe ni. Se ba ri di je so na, arri aleri che, only one hectare. Wa ba re borra la mesi, mesi ki amanchi. Mara aleri che mesi, para leje eh, kampai we, ya only one hectare. Zale, le fe lo la re le le lo ra ki le go. Re be reko pe la mo ba parliamente le ba agriculture. Ha ba ka ritushe. Gorin, rencha di, ribita di bushi, re ko lo ma ke plakeela, ha ba musho, le ba agriculture. Ba ka ritushe. Ra, a re le cha, ba le fe lo le ngo re li emi. Go re ko na go le ma. Recha je na puru chi che ki ba tuwa ba nchi, ba ba du la mo go ra ba ri. Ri te len, ka mu, ka mu ho omu we, le juale le seri. Re arata goru tushe le le ba tu. Re juale le seri ni, le ritushe le ba na, ba bo re na. Recha je na puru chi che ki, ba, ba tuwa ba badina ga ma ba, pi ba kabakalaka na seventy-five. Ya di embassy, ba re go re na ba ri, rutengi, re le mengleli na. Zale, arre na bo taat. Mara ga fa la re musho ka tushe na le re, reka tushe na le ba na ba bo re na. Zale, di tlo tlo che di tlo ka, re taga da li, di water rice, ki tu ba bo roko. Ya bo bedi, re, ba parliamente le ba agriculture, ba ka bu xamo la uela wa gorin. Go be le ma renja. Ka gorin, di mo je re le ma mo go cho nje, di fecha ba di fi xa. Ha ba di fi xa, ba taga di homu. Zale, ke reki submita, my humble plea to the parliament, the first le go na ngo re no na ki ma lepetleke. Ga ra ta go le ma, ga ra ta otushe na le ba na ba bo re na, ka cha temo. Eh, ke re va le ngo re, musho re lo go re se ke ga la se. Au yema ka ma udu, ute ga ma lepetleke, ute ubo on. Minus julde je only one hectare. Mara go na, is a drop in the ocean. Re fara faru e ki Ivan Plus, re fara faru e ki englo Americani. Eh ne, asba na ba, ba asba na ba mutsi, ka mu ka ba taberka ngamaini. Zale, agriculture yo na ka food security, li ona e ka chiaka ru. Zale, ke re, mo la utewo, ke a uteh. Ibi le be ke re ma matali, ga re ba ta o bolela, bolele, bolela. Iska ba white elephant. Re bo ya bo ye ni, ri tushe ni, arre bo no re ga di juang. Ha leka diela di water rice, la ritushe mo re ka tushe ona. Le to bo na le le na, ha le to tla ga pa, ha le to ko ma le go re, re ya go pile, kelewa.
Thank you very much. My name is Samuel Mapeka. I am from eh, Mukopani in Ma lepetleke. I, uh. Uh, we, we, we received a piece of land from the traditional authorities. Eh, we, they gave us eh, thirty-five to forty hectares. Eh, and then now eh, these two mines, which are Anglo and, and Ivan Plus eh, requested to do their operations on, on, on part of our farming land. And also, they are also using our water. And eh, they only helped us by fencing only one hectare of, of our land. And eh, we actually need to produce more. And we actually need to produce more. That, that one hectare is not enough. We need to fence eh, 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 more, more land. And then, eh, they, they also helped us with bore holes. Eh... So now, eh, we would like to appeal to parliament and the department of agriculture to help us with the process of debushing eh, uh, our, that land that we, 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 we farm on. And then please help us fence eh more land. Eh, because we, we are working with a lot of people and a lot of community members approach us, they want to join us. Eh, because we, they, they want us, there are other people who have come with proposals to come plant lucerne. And eh, eh, if you can help, we can really eh create a lot of jobs. But then we've got challenges. Eh, one other challenge that we have is that, is, is, is the challenge that comes with the water rights. And eh, that place is not, eh, does not have security. I don't know, why don't we bring back the, the, the old system in our areas where we used to, to have felt the ranges taking care of eh, eh, this especially agricultural land? Eh, I submit. And if parliament really cares, please come to eh our area and see what we are doing. Eh, we, agriculture should actually support or help mining in this job creation eh, 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 exercise, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tote. Yanon kinna kene ketsama isa, hoket. My last speaker was Mama Watukuyelile, ke komara hokua akiti wayasatla, maybe ba montezema foku. Kia na napamistela toho. Haneki supa kamola. Yanon, getrohuetasoh. We had about nineteen speakers. Ten decide, seven and only two. Kia kamoli.
Juale, reto tla kamukha hor, rinali, libulete kabochi nineteen, kachiya teni kamu.
Kia kamola, this row has had their fair share. That had about seven, ki ba tepiste hori klabaki reela. Hakotsia matsoho atene kamu. Kotzia matsoho atlatla ngabu akabukopani, so that we make up.
Juale, kia ka tukochi la go on this side. Eh, letlakulonexi jele ipinne kago hechuwa, kaba toba bo na. Re ta, ya kamu rekaschi ebalisome, retlano chiabamalo.
Batu basese ba emava, atwa ba emava, atwa yanon getro ba very strict or howtla. Skadumedi sa ridumedi sa nejase yo submission, refete rokhono refeba banchan seker.
So, uh, people are now standing up, going outside. So I'm going to plead with you that we have already greeted each other. So when you come to stand here, please do not start by greeting. Just say or make your submission.
Retlatkala kawena, dejyo kuhobunsu, one.
Atoma kawena, I'm from here.
Sorry. Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. That's too much, nine. Bahulu ribua kapidal, are we kadi challenges ita rona ta farming? Komitiemo, eto thotha sala dilotsa wo di kamu harekamo. Kilikupe leharibuahore, haribu enkamola wana oh. Are aw sapota haro sapoti mabaka iki infeela. Hori rinali matsigne hoama kananka, rinalidi province mo hai, rinalidi maspala mo hai, ma fa paruna timo tuati mo hai. Haru konu horu, haru zwa mo, haru kuhuarabeela. Ka horu moritleho mamela. So arekwa ama, are na di karabota dilotsa di ntsa di buiwa mu, ra ubisi sana. So skalu anela ukuwa, rebatla sala batuwa ba bua enkamola wawa pidao, feela.
We are here to discuss this bill that is called Pedal. We are not here about the problems that you encounter here in your areas. There are offices of the municipality and the provincial offices that you can submit your problems to. We are here to only hear as to whether you support or do not support this bill, as I had already said.
This row, kia hokopa horu, hakonale motosanze ngaba toba bua. Aru ngolletzo namoha se adikisemo. You had about twelve speakers here.
Now, I'm going to request that if there is still any more people who would like to speak from this row, please make written submissions and submit your submissions on that table. Because you have already had enough speakers from this row.
This, huile ba toba lesevena, ki sekiho bua kini kaba bararu kamu.
Now, we've had seven speakers from that row. So I said that I'm only going to take three now.
Kia hunkaba bararu, baba mbatala ngolala balitlisemo.
I'm only going to take three. Then others would make their written submissions and submit them to the table. So I'm only going to take three from this side.
Tatewa, dilotsa di ready?
Uh...
Yes.
The gentleman in a red hat?
Mama akiti we metengama utu eti ngwana kohai. Bome ba buile ba leba ngata, kimme ki, ki rata bomme. Mara kia hova tla horu dule mo hats. Abuti, arei. No, bomme ba buile, and bomme were very brief and going to their issues. Kenze kikuala hori ki bomamba ba bua?
Eh, lekujie bomme ba buile ba ba kupana, re ba senata vinchabona. Lo wala kime kenchike wala, hori ki bomamba walela.
Abutiwa, slasa tradisioni, beke kipuahora lonamo, la linkalele ntsa le di written submission. Akiwa toru bomme ba tlebari won, tateba re ra ba dima re bomme, kikwa toba uba lebon.
Eh, le nowa ba tla kuhopela horu, lewa lemfasia ger. Lewa lenche, olenya kango di, walela leli fiixa mo tafule.
So that re, nachanele ba tuba salemba fitlemo very early. Rekaskara telekualitza tika ofela, we also appreciate if you give us your submission in writing.
Uh, so that we can also consider those who arrived here very early. Eh, romme re, re kaseke radueli cha chi kamu kamu.
Di bui tarona, hekere, ishaile. Skara dumedi sanan, ready introduction, let's go to the point so that we save everybody's time to speak. Ikai...
Uh, our speakers, I'm going to ask that when I start doing this, please realize that you have now gone beyond your time to speak.
Haris muli papa.
Eh, Tovela. Naki leje kua wamasinya, kijwa kama Mukopani. Eh, kie malimula wana oh, warinakere, aujolebele. Kupa yaka hopuli, yaka utaritusha kudu, wa watawa tusha okreita mesho. Juale, kareli, naki li omuwa ba ilorin, kumulimi ruhi. Kamra wada koba lo, kafecha udula uduma ulcheka, ka, ka, ka bana plania hori. Ka hori, lapalona le salo ona, xanjikino bana hori, kikala peleka ton. Kalapala, kadira, tumo tu. Juale, kubekuhopela horu, ler na ler tusha ingata wacha, ti place. Oba ona mu, eh, lifulu lelo. Lewe lo rin kauri, chijin gidera kara, baru wa, kinali plot ya seventeen hectares, kereki le plot ya seventeen hectares, kabu uorla fontaine. So, leki wi, li afecha, eba inyan, foluruwa, lakaka kake naldipurpo, kote di kaban. Eighty-seven, niti homu, kete di kaban. Eleven, niti, niti kalvisi jago. So kuhopela pla kena na yokuulunya, kia lebu.
Uh, greetings. My name is Jack Massenia. Uh, I'm from Mukopani. Now, I stand here to support this bill as it would help in creating jobs. I am a farmer and, uh, doing this job, it also helps in feeding my family. Now, uh, my plea to the government is for you to provide us with farms. I bought a seventeen, a seventeen hectare plot. But due to the large number of my livestock, uh, this plot is no longer enough for my livestock. So I would plead with you to please provide us with more land. I thank you.
Oh, yeah. Oh, Tovela, Tovela. Oh, lela ke, keli vijoke powu koda. Kumo olofadi asavuni, matu. Eh, so, seki sara tan, kia di melana, li eh, bile. Eh, moloring, eke tele di jega mahari wulela. Itla tisha, se lo ring, eh, sekaro kola kuhopela releba olofadi. Moloraka hona wite melana. Eh, ratu leja, je lo ring, reka di fiixa la motimo. Juale, karegi wulela oru ke. Le la kenele, chi mumo keli mangon, aso. Eh, begeri, kamukho, bile wulela, ore la sapota. Eh, lutusha oru, eh, regreditwa ne. Ha, ha, hampe uvi jualur, hono kran, nucha, cha, cha namukuto. Karu morle, morso, yagi di homu jaba haisha. And juale, herso, yagi di homu. Beni di homu, ba leva la lebona oru ke. Le wana ba diya business, kia di homu, nar diya business, kaoliema. So, orga ba ni fence, nuri, nuri ga tusha oru. Rhonodo juleja, ofeta moro juleja ngahona. Oga hatisha kudu atavich. So bile julebele, eh, honodo tusha kia lebu.
Thank you very much, my name is Paul Koda. I am visually impaired, but I stand here in support of this bill. It sounds like a bill that can really help us, especially as the, eh, the disabled community. I, uh, I also have a piece of land where I conduct my farming. But now, our challenge, it's livestock. Eh, cattle and goats eh come into our, our farms and they eat up and destroy our, our crops. So, eh, please, let's, let's, let's do something about owners of livestock because they forget that as much as they are in business, we also who plant eh, 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 crops, we are also eh in business. Thank you very much.
Eh, Tovela. Le vijola ka ke, ma jadi bodu fani. Wa watre mama vatani. Eh, rinali NPO ya rinamo, kena fko. Naki na brain stretcha ramowe. Eh, ere kere, bile kia esapota. Mara kibonchedi lupo ulunya na Samwe. Za hori, agre ere sapota, rebonchana hapuru, molale, leka lukisha, mola. Ari, a, the, are lebele. Hoya kadi presentatione, za, za chepersone, heba babala kadi private land. And then le, le speakerasara nasalapala, le heba walela ka horu kari. Yona ndwe, exploratione la Mara, eke lebele za agre heya kuhopela la iwo nauri. Aesa ma ekamku lo nguriki tomorri, eke lebele, hoya kabi le, le swering. Ere heka walela ka farm, farm owners, or, or those who owns the farms. You want to help private land. They recognize those private land. Then get two economies into one country. So it will be a problem. We want to support them. The government, the local government, the minister, all the power, they want mining, offer the rights. They can give those rights or take those rights or remove. What they want, the rights are hard to manage. So what we want to do is balance. Please, let's talk about it. Let's talk about it. Let's support the farmers. Let's exclude the township. So we want to help them. Those that support them, that's a problem. Because if you support them, you will die. Those tycoons, they want to mine. They want to do it. Those farmers, they want it.
Greetings. My name is Fani Majadi Bodu. Firstly, I would like to say that I support this bill, but I would also like to point out a few loopholes in it so that they can be fixed. As the chairperson had said, that there is also a private land. But my problem is that there is maybe a problem that the workers are not being considered. So this bill should also talk about the workers as well because I've noticed that it only talks about the farm owners. So when the bill is passed, that would then make it to continue on leaving us out. Now, we would also like to be included in the economy because if we are being left out, then that would also create problems. Now, when rights are given to miners, there should also be a balance because as the bill stands right now, it actually leaves us out as the township people and the workers. So we are asking that we should be considered as well. I thank you.
This agriculture land bill, I think you should notice. 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 So I think you should notice. 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 Because I think you should notice. I think you should notice. I think you should notice. So I think you should notice. It's plus minus fifty. I think you should notice. So I think you should notice. I think you should notice. I think you should notice.
Thank you very much. My name is Jerry Power from Mutimole. I cannot say I support the bill because I have not had an opportunity to go through to peruse the bill. But from what I'm hearing from other speakers, I kind of like what they are saying about the bill. So I can say I support it just a little bit. So we have about fifty farms in our village. All these farms live alone. And then in the olden days, we used to work these farms. We used to use donkeys and bulls to farm on these farms in Rasaleka Village. So what I want to say is now is that please help us with resources like tractors so that we're able to farm.
I think you should notice.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to present to parliament. My name is Barry York. I'm a farmer from Alma. I'm a hunter and I'm a game farmer. I partly support the bill because we need clarity. I fully support the productive and preservation of agricultural land that's well planned and well managed for the benefit of our people. Biodiversity management objectives need to be clarified. US Parliament are the governing body that governs all government departments. We manage biodiversity, both wild biodiversity and domestic biodiversity. The wild biodiversity falls under the Department of Environmental Affairs. Domestic biodiversity falls under Department of Agriculture. In this bill, it says agricultural purposes means practices associated with the use of agricultural land. We farm on agricultural land, not on protected areas' land. And involves the keeping of animals, including wild animals, as an agricultural activity. So we need clarity. Are we an agricultural activity or we a nature conservation activity? I say we are an agricultural activity because we positively manage and produce wildlife for the benefit of our people. We do not evict our people for the benefit of wildlife like they've done in our parks. We do not allow overpopulations of elephants to destroy our habitat and tell our people we're not allowed to use those elephants. My rhino on my farm, I bought them, I protect them, I feed them, I look after them, I chase the poachers away, but I'm not allowed to sell the product from my animals that I have produced. Our workers on our farm own twenty-five percent of the rhinos. Parliament tells us we must transform. Our workers are now millionaires because they own over forty kilograms of rhino horn. So who's keeping them poor? Our own government is keeping them poor by denying them the right to sell the product that they have produced. So we need clarity, good people. We need to decide, what does preservation mean? In terms of agriculture, preservation means our right to farm, our right to make money, our right to kuhamba pambi. Preservation in Defer, in Department of Environmental Affairs, means kicking people out to preserve wildlife that's not allowed to be used. Where do we stand? Parliament needs to give clarity. Defer talks about rewilding. What happens with rewilding? We chase people off their land. We don't rewild to chase people off. We bring wildlife to benefit our animals. So my plea to parliament is you need to clarify where we stand and we as game farmers wish to be with the Department of Agriculture because we positively manage and produce wildlife for the benefit of our people. We do not evict people for the benefit of wildlife. Thank you, parliament, and thank you again for this opportunity. If you need further information, I would gladly participate and give it to you. Thank you so much.
The government, the farmers, they want to support the farmers. The farmers, they want to support the farmers. I think you should notice. The government, the farmers, they want to support the farmers. The farmers, they want to support the farmers. The farmers, they want to support the farmers. The farmers, they want to support the farmers.
Thank you very much. My name is Joyce Mutsupi. I am from Mukopani, Mualakwena. I also rise to support the bill and I hope that the processes that are going to follow, I hope that they go well and then we end up having an act from this process. I am a farmer. I have livestock and I also plant some crops and I sell my produce in town. So we have once requested tractors and the government responded. They gave tractors, but unfortunately, they did not give the tractors to the right people. So your problem as the government is that you do not support people who work. You support people who want to eat. So I made, we have once made a request for a tractor and all that I was told was that the closing date for the submission is closed. We need tractors. Thank you very much.
I think you should notice.
Greetings. My name is Toveta Sebe. Firstly, I would like to say that I support this bill and I would further like to remind you that I have voted for you. So having voted for you, you should also listen to me. Do not forget me. And I would like to indicate that my problem is hunger. Hunger is very disrespectful, but it has no plans. If it had any plans, it would have finished us. We need to get, to work together to get rid of hunger. I'm a small-scale farmer. I produce beans and I'm in need of a tractor and a fence. And another problem is that people have occupied the area where we're supposed to be doing farming. So I need your help. I need you to provide us with a tractor and a fence. I thank you.
Can you please close that door for us? Because there's a car that is facing directly at us and their windscreen is shining directly at us.
I don't know who to last because of that reflection now. Just the door. The first one. It's in at last. That one, yes.
Thank you very much. My name is Edwin Rabalawo from Mukopani. I am a site manager for an NPO which is involved in farming.
I am a site manager for an NPO which is involved in farming. We support the bill and parliament has been coming here with many other bills and we've been supporting and supporting and supporting, but nothing happens. Our children, our children graduate and unfortunately, after graduation, they do not get jobs. They turn, they turn into, they become criminals and then they become drug addicts. And they, and some of them end up being killed. So the problem here is joblessness. So please support us with our farming so that we are able to create jobs for these children and so that we also have something to eat. You know, we, we produce spinach, beetroot, carrots and then the mixture of those vegetables. We know that we are able to find them in a mainstream. So we also produce oranges which can be actually processed into juice. So please help us, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Enamashli Program Coordinator. My name is John Mukobane, I'm from Rawele. Within, from Rawele. That is now within the watering of the Mualakwena municipality. Bilie, kerata ore ki athecha, not ninety-nine point nine percent, but hundred percent. So, ki filue, erikitene, tawen gatsela eh, ki filue, obaki mulimi. Wo ki swearing six hundred hectares from the council called the Bokwabarina CPT, Communal Property Trust. Ki filue six hundred hectares eh, for lebaga la ten years. So, ki kubela intervention ya lena, compadres, to go out there just to modify complexion of the situation amongst the people at large because the seven hundred and twenty-four beneficiaries of the Bokwabarina are not working as we speak. Kerata, oshuma gata waya du koo, das poultry. Two livestock, three restoration of the citrus orchards. Livestock lively, livestock. The people of the Bokwabarina are not working as we speak. Remember, the site of the Bokwabarina is within the Mualakwena municipality. So, ki kubela, re melaka makarena, parliament and everyone in this room, to go and vacate the dislike of poverty out there. I thank you, Enamashli Program Coordinator.
Ki dimedishel, lena lakaki, John Mukobane, Rawele. Ok, tuakaleko, el filola, Rawele. Firstly, I would like to state that I support this bill hundred percent. I'm a farmer and I was given six hundred hectares. I'm supposed to work that land for ten years. I would like to inform you that we have seven hundred and twenty-four members of Bokwabarina. And the problem is that they are unemployed. We farm in livestock, different kinds of livestock, animals. And again, I would like to say that Bokwabarina is under a Mualakwena municipality. I thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity and your opportunity for giving me this platform. First, I can't say I supported this bill, but I supported the idea behind the bill under the following fact. If you look into this bill, it seems as if this bill, it gives all the powers to the chiefs. The reason why I'm saying that, one of the speakers here have already said that some of the kings, for an example, there, there in Mukopani, there is a mine of Anglo mine and blood rift. We've been applying for the land for the past five years in order to secure it, but only to find that what they respond we get is that the owner is in UK and we don't know him. But when the developer of the mine came in, it took the developer only three months to secure that land. But if maybe, I'm making my request to you. If this is going to be implemented, maybe if you can channel it so that it needs to promote Epeira and go in hand with Neymar. Because if it's in line with Neymar, they will be easy for us in order to secure that. Because most of the areas there, you find that decisions are making, are being taken within the, 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 they, they in dunas and they not familiar with what they were writing. For an example, they, last, last month, the developer of Ivan Blood did, took hundred and twenty-one old people aged, the small, the, 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 the lowest one was at about sixty-five years. Just imagine if you take a sixty-five-year-old man to come and sign a surface lease agreement. Does he knows about that? Really, it won't happen. Maybe if you can come with a mechanism, you came with a mechanism behind, how are you going to take a responsibility for those who divert from this bill? Because the idea of the bill is right, but the implementation, it's a problem. And then you come with a very, a very manicure bill, but when it goes to implementation, the problem is there by the municipality and those. Because if you can look into some of the judgment out of these bills, if you consider the judgment of the likes of the Malaidu judgment or that one of the Lisetling. Decision are being implemented and taken after they've been run in and out of the court, knowing that the community doesn't have that financial muscles to can take them to secure a highly rated lawyer to represent them there. Please, came with a cocktail kind of a mechanism where to guide the, the, those who doesn't implement those rules. Then we will support it. I thank you.
Thank you very much, my name is Daniel Madlanalo. I cannot say I support the bill, but obakire, ngasere ki thecha mula kaka nywa, ewpja ki thecha, eh, kubulu, ye ilungore, itu lela mrao kona mula kaka nyawa. Eh, mula kaka nyawa itecha, eke, onyaka ofa, eh, magoshi, ma, ta. Eh, mshala, kanaka kuwa, eh, Mukopani. Anglo, Anglo, mweboa Anglo lua, lua plat, lua plat. Eh, ba dirile di kubelo cha naga. Omee ba, kuchwe refela, eh, di kwe di jetaro, gore bafiwe, naga ya na ye. Omee bialu, eh, eh, kwa tswe, wala, wala, ukusha utluu kaba kala ore. Di peto cha mkhuto, ki di peto chiro kulu, omee di chiwa, re, kucha mba kenga, ama we. Di chiwa ki di tuna, wa magoshi, bao, basina, kuletsi, ebo. Basa hono ukusha, oru kudirega, omee kape. Kaya kuiwa di kopa no, ncha ochea di peto cha nacho. Otono kucha, babi di cheba, twa kala kana, two hundred and twenty-one. Wa kucha lungore, kamka kabo, na, ki di tlakoputso. Ba twa ilungore, habana meba inale, let's see, kibana balo, babo utela, di peto cha mkhuto. Eh, bialu, eh, utata, babo goloke ta, ba yatse inchwe tirisho. Re kanu, re, re, lama mula kaka nyawa, mula, luhono. Omee gofida kuwa ba maspalin, otu apalewa, ki goru, otse inchwe tirisho. Eh, kaga ki bulaje ki, 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 kagut, theheka, but si, si, ki, ki tswe niya, ki tswe niya, kafela ore, otu fitisha, ewpja. Okasetse inchwe tirisho, ki alabo.
Eh, libichala kere, Malisela Simkitema, eh, kijako Mukopani, mo, Stark Water. Ko, eh, renale problem ya, ya naga la. Eh, na ki oche, kama ga, lemo, kominti niya repela moyo. Rela watwata him, eh, renale mashim. Eh, about eight hundred families. We vanale depoche in about seven to ten hectares. So, problem, eh, mainu kushiche mula wa risha ostarakwata. And that farm, kaba re bea mula, eh, aratevuru dujuwa mula. So, letava mashim, eh, asingi bay, bay eleshe, asingi bay shalimrao. So, mashim ai lu ring, vera verikish, mainu wa di le dumping site. Eh, honu wa lekere ya ku, mainu renaga, oru barre, eh, barre kela na, ya orre leme. Eh, rabade problem arman, twana re na, kona protecta mainu, oru minuska blalele re. So re na sanji retomere koto ene, arna di chalate. Aigna ku bomtele guruntat, olawa leji everything ya lu ring, venka ya blalela. So, renale problem, anu ala sanji rotle imma mashima arna ku koto. Ena arna chalate, ene stiller ya koto. Rafiila because mainu cha di chalate kamo. Renale problem kama mainu anglo ene, ba twa were na nuale, ba trokofala. Untrofala ba twa banchi every time. Most strike, awana mezi, eh, awana divo. Eh, ene re na mainu kirele re lema. Ki oche lu, kwa ga risha masa kama, boma eighty bags. Ko chi lu, rukono re kisha ma we, eh, re kajin kaka la kama ga. Bolimo ama pozi, di bongisi, loja kamo. So, honu wa le mainu wa chere, and then awana ntwe risha angko, gorudula ang. Libuchidi, di NPO, di NGO, rabatroylorin ratatemo. Eh, mara honu wa re, rebo shuloma so. Arna naga, problem akostarakwata re kore. Eh, naga la reva kali, le kominti niya, the CPA. Ya makou, eh, naga waru filayona. Anuwa le CPA yela, ya etle imma ga depoche, depoche, depoche. So, awana moru, moru ru leku, oka roka, oka hona oli. Because herri kirela ntwe mula roli. Ki, ba, bariki plake ya, ya kwa kama kou, ya CPA. So, eh, na kiri, parlamenta yelemo, eh, nka etla kama koe lu re leku. Ikatsa nanlata ve, ya ku, ya ku di filaje inchela. Because eh, mainu anglo otaisha va, twana mantra na ware na. Agushin tro ba idea. Ena ba twa, ba sokona mo lu ring, eh, awana kama koe ka, kula kona, eh, ki alabo.
Greetings, my name is Malisela Thema from Mukopani in an area called Stark Water. We have a problem of land. Our community used to survive on farming. About eight hundred families had about seven to ten hectares. Now the mine has relocated our community to Stark Water. And it also turned our farms into the dumping site of the mine. Now the problem is that our chiefs protected the mine. They do not want us to talk to the mine management. We are now supposed to claim our farms through court proceedings and we do not have money. We are starving because we used to survive on farming. Now the, eh, the mine has taken our land and we are now unproductive. And we are also fighting over the land with the CPA of our Bokwabarina. So we would like to plead with the parliament to intervene because we are suffering. I thank you.
Eh, nagin na filimonima, utjale fasen la mapela makou. Gali, ki tokubela charelo mapela, adanfulaya, re na ya. Eh, ki la techi, ki talua, kubela charelo. Kanu bulalela, ka xianniti, eki chanezi, wey, bulalela, ka bulalela, jei sinzo. Ki ile kawa na, ki na le sokolo, karkamae, ka guala, nipotata le mo, va chachi ya havuti. Eki tothoma, guala ri hurundi. Ka kiri elu rinno, honale plasa kwa, baru twiniisha, ki mo tholechi, mo papare na. Yale, eki snor, guala ri hurundi, eki zamai leli loche la risha la ri, sina mutoko me. Kawaka apelacha, wanawa, kaka nyanga, wawa nyano, re, wanitusha, mo, we, warimeshi. Ya ba ki pisiko plase, nkenlebele churi, itari tusha. All right, wapa la, plasa apa la, rutusha. Right, ki eki libelle, kere mara, nama ki todiwa. Eh, refelere di cheryaka, obolawa, ko plase kwa, ravara tusha komo we. Ava no tsere, situshacha nyana se, lin situ. Ra kiri elu rinno, na bidendwa, ea feela. Ka naha, na kari tu, kari no, man sanchi kilise, utja mo plase. Eki thoma ki, kata kata, kasamrao ata, vanava va shu. Banapa, wanyaka, batigi, ba plase, we, ba kucha elu ri kirina. Ra ya ra ugu la, di lae ne, ba dia, di kampa, cha di pu. Ya waru, sa inechi tirimanse feela. Ki e waru, ncha ba ra wa. Mula, di tuliga, let's see, ne. Eh, wa ra oriche, pesani, arinairi, morinairi. Kamoma shumunga mo. Lo, rema richa ri chela, la ri gu, la ugu la. Ele fecha, lefa tri ta use. Eh, a, a, awana utata, ra te uela. Ra bereka, ra bereka, omo warinana pa kwa, aru ku ugu la. Masika nyaka, one thousand. Ya waru, three thousand ela, efetwa, ta, o, thousand ela, mula. Rafiwa thousand, ene, na bidega, waka we, sheka, kova, adirela le aho. Afika, ropar, morinar, ra warri emechi, tiel, vi koncha, di stompo chela, rtahanar le. Tilile mamu cha etama ile, two thousand evo. Yale, all right, ka wo ya, wanemba va shu, warile, morinava, no. Di yang, di bangka, ricoli fa chalate kama so. Awara dia, di bangka, kawaka, wana elu rinno, chalate we, ya, te vale. Na bidega tuwa, kawa, oborame, iti mo chimu. Eki borame, iti, kapata la, seven thousand. Ka wo ya, eba fecha, mbate ri she we. Ba fecha, ncha, di boromache, boromache, neela. Banyaka, three thousand eh, ya di fae fecha, use, ifor, muliti. Mezi, ma uaska uela kamo. Ya waru, ki patachi, ten thousand. Tu, yale ki todiwa. Mulitwa ugo, nchi, two, two years, wa ho, wa. Mulitwa uga nchi two, two years, wa hawa tsarawa buraru. Ka thoma kawa lwa kawreka, ntiwa zintela otena kamaa re motu.
Ntate Filimon.
Ya wata va chauri motu.
Ntate Filimon. Ki ko pa, ntate aye moho re, ntusoe re tshanzare mutuseka yo na kiefi.
Alright, ikui le gali. Eh, gali anu gali. Ki le ma kama so. Chalaitela infili eji, eki lebele turi ki lese, chalaitela, gerar ki lese chimuela. Agituvu ki diye, infili eji ki chalaitela, di treka ready nyaka four hundred eh, ke. Ya wata va chauri, alright. Ki eki wana re no, karu ki wori le mezi, kinali janre ita, kinali motu kamaa re wa opampa mezi. Ampeki leme kama so ki yale, ki yeti eh, agir oka ki five meat ya di chamaa ti. Karu gala, ki eiye, oka ki two meat. Yale, honale posue, ngwe eki inswe nyangani gali. Chimuwa weki ya ele di cheka tratata, di kotacha di hulucho, honale mushima no re awana mula wore na. Wa ri kumula, wa ri chia tratata kaya, wa eki ri ki wocha wa, wa vani chawa. Awana antwenka i diya karu no, ki tampaka wana re na angaria. Yale, ki kamo ki hopela ntusho, kirile ki gala di petru tiya se di mele. Karu ki chela sata riye iya se mele. Yale, le me na ha no ele, kwa ki wulela kame na ha no re, tata ki wulela le jei singinshone. Ki ga na muho wa, kirowa le kawaka la mushima no waru chela ndiko tacha tratata, wa hau la. Yale, ki fecha ki yale.
Ki ko pa, ki ko pa re kampani, relevant le pe lo. CPF eki ontate Filimon adula ngo, then you must attend to that. Ako na mushima no tshanzatukome teba tuwawa khun. Community policing forum, attend to that matter. Comrades, fighters, everybody, attend to that.
Eh, arabelangio natavewelore, ontate mautla, karu onelumushima no va tswi.
Thank you very much, my name is Filimon Mautla. Eh, I would like to start with an apology. Eh, I have mental health challenges. So eh, I might, I might relapse at any time and it might get worse at any time. So eh, I'm sorry in advance. So, we, we used to eh, farm. We used to farm vegetables on our piece of land. Eh, but eh, this other day when we were in that eh, piece of land where we normally do our farming, we were approached by eh, a white, a white. Yes, we were approached by white people who were carrying guns and they threatened eh, to, 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 to shoot us. And then as I was trying to run away eh, they said to me eh, they, they stopped me from running away and they asked, who's the owner of this piece of land? And I told them that I was the rightful owner of the, the piece of land. And then now eh, they, they said eh, we. They, they actually, they, they said we must pay them for, I mean, three thousand rand for eh, deforest, deforestation on that piece of land. And then eh, eh, but eh, we only had a thousand rand. So eh, this matter was also taken to the social workers eh, and finally with the payment was not done. And then another thing that I want to tell you is that eh, I paid seven thousand for a bore hole in that piece of land. And eh, I also, I paid a further three thousand rand for pipes to be fitted there. Eh, but then now it has been three years since I'm wait, eh, I've been waiting. We do have a hole, eh, it has been three years since I'm waiting for the, the pipes to be delivered so that I have a proper complete bore hole. So, another challenge is that we do not have eh, farming eh, equipments eh. We, we pay four hundred rand per hectare when we hire a sector to come eh, farm, a plow. I've been five years. And then eh, we, we plant onions and tomatoes eh, and eh, and, and eh, my, my fence is not really stable. Sometimes it falls. And eh, I've realized that it's because of this boy who steals eh, these eh, the sticks that I use to support eh, my fence. Please help me, thank you very much.
Tawela. Nikai. Libijala keni na Malisela Jan Munanyani. Ki du la ona mo, dimula mohopo, Paraminga Wat 13. So, na kiri Malisela, ki hanana lintwi. The reason why ki hanana lintwi, it is because of eh, parliamentary arena legislature na e chavamahuo. Why le chavamahuo, chefesen, ko parliamentary, why le chavamahuo. Eh, what are the differences, different opinions, different proposals ko parliamentary from the opposition parties to say, let us expropriation land without compensation. Ntwela aito alili everyone, e motu, aikora aito alili motu. That policy aito alili motu, even le mahua, but no benefita kamaro that policy. So, why le chavamahuo, because ntwela is very simple. Enaha, eleka muhola eh, for an example, this is a farm, moeloring, regra familyi, mahua, baberaka kaka plaza. Re na, lena government eh, le chiam eh, plaza eh, le locala kamaro tau lo ya musho. It's very simple, agre are proposing land fail, are proposal, grab, I mean, are, are expropriety land fail. Le wana mahua ale raba, expropriate. Agre government agenti itli kama la plaza nka mula ere eh, tsebauru from today, plaza eh, itonea government. Therefore, eraluen, oto ba asset ya government, agro krili kama. Oto na asset eh, ya government, eral from today, you are a director directing those labors. Those farmers wa American kama, le wana, ba wala under government. When eh, as eh, 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 white person or a black person who krilinga mula, who control that farm, you'll be director. Shona kona, tchela pele, eiye jau di guna, hobela market wa government whereby eiye chela diya, diya marketing wa government. Government oru honudi ya chalaita. Therefore, ye ya re amended this thing, na kibona kari just waste of time. Because hona nonkele na today, itli le more na, proposal this thing, majority amended it, bypassiisha, back to parliament. Agelo uripotile chefesen ore, yokra another team niere wongba, kwe seka seka, baisha to eh, president. Therefore, cha jine ito buang after five years, aesa ta, aesa lele, ki wawa. And then ntwela ya bua, o sanji wale back to morein, the home bodies. Ale sakrara re na eh, ya bua, itla tsa soka parliamentary polokuani, ba bua, heba bua ba bija watu, awasa bija re. Re na proposing the relevant eh, proposal, aesa wa morein na. Therefore, parliamentary create a mechanism, momuwa wana wa manipulator. Ba bija ba raba wana, ba bija udi familyi chavo wana, ba bija udi boru chavo wana, ba re itang, close corporation. Bataka plaza. So plaza eh, aesa kira ki buku ku, aesa kira ki bu malumi, i kira ki di familyi. Eh, pesen no elor ngazibisiloka eiye, eh, pesen no elor ngazibisiloka tamati. Ki di boru chale na, lena the parliamentaryans, le fa di boru chale na, bava satibisiloka eiye. Le ba fajona, ba collapsea di plaza chela, eh, wa bua media wa, wa mahua, city press, daily side ba bua. Baya go di plaza ncho, na chela chabo malu, chabo malu mari na, di familyi chela na wala wala fidendwa di plaza. Bakara lo eh, the, the, that farmer is dry, awana antwe diya la. Ba bua mahua, ba bua warla i won, musutu palakipla. Ki wala la maka, ba bua war musutu palakipla. Agir, ba bua again, media wa mahua, oya onakuani, wa bua ur musutu palakipla. La i wonar ki wala la kai. Therefore eh, the, the, the expropriation of land without compensation, it will accommodate everyone, everyone. So this one, na kisan san ki wana re still, yo sefa back to, bonava la ba tu. Because consultation, o sanzer wale ko bo. There are consultant, rea ko bo. Thank you, kialabo.
Greetings, my name is Malisela Jan Munanyani from Mhopong, Paraminga, Wat 13. I do not support this bill. Eh, the problem is that eh, the parliament is afraid of white eh, people. Why are you afraid of white people? In parliament, there's eh, different parties. Eh, some are advocating for expropriation of land without compensation. Now, if eh, there is a white farmer who is occupying a farm, you should expropriate that farm and put it under the government. And by so doing, you'd also be expropriating that farmer. He would also be under the government. Even the produce that he produces would eh, go to the government's market. Now, I see the exercise that eh, we are embarking on here as being futile as it would not bear any fruits. Eh, we have a problem with eh, the government as eh, it doesn't report back to us. When we make eh, land claims, once eh, those eh, or once the land becomes available, they then go and report to other people. They would then give such eh, farms to their family members and friends who know nothing about farming and they eventually collapse those farms. And that would then make the white eh, farmers and the media to start saying that black people cannot farm. So, I think that expropriation of land without compensation would accommodate everyone. I thank you.
Tumelang chavase su. Ki Mishak Mabula from Le Palale, eh, Wat 9. Eh, ki le, ketsala fasana le palale ki, ki supporta bill here, previous edition and development agricultural land bill. Eh, ki tchoba mo kutso ne, kaso womteli kare kenebele zena wakona we, sese zamayi. So, ki tchoba supporta, so ki tchoko pala moyo na, ki tchoko pala ore. Eh, parliamentary level eh, issue ya, ya seftigo di farming, ko di, ko di plaza nza re, na ko farming zere mozo. So, ki tchoba pala letava re, level leore sanji submite le, ba tuwadi disabilities, sanji etlisti eko no ba kavara. Ba hona ba, ba fa di training letava ya. Ki tchoba pala le ya eh, training eh, we ya kamaro di farms, hobela training eh, wono supporta. Ba hona ba le di training kamaro di plaza zee. So, ki tchoba womteli, ki tchoba mo kutso ne, supporta bill here and, tawela.
Eh, thank you very much, my name is Mishak Mabula. I am from Le Palale, eh, Wat 9. I also stand to support the bill. I am going to, to be shot eh, because eh, time is not on our side. Eh, eh, I would like to, to, to appeal to you. Please, look at eh, the issue of safety in our farms. And eh, another thing is that eh, please, let's, let's eh, not eh, forget. People living with disabilities in everything that eh, we do, please, let's incorporate them in all our eh, 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 everything that we do. And then again, even when eh, there are opportunities for training, please let them participate and then let, let them also receive those skills, thank you very much.
Eh, tawela, wabla la mo, ki filala maleka from Mukopani, Wat 32. Eh, firstly, I'm going to say I fully support the bill, kama ho itang, it shows ore. Eh, ranyana ranyana, rata wara fita moloringi. The government come together, Maroshi and Lady Traditional Hillas and all. Eh, senka hopela longos era on the bill is to acknowledge the specific places like the spiritual places. Ba hono ose ba oru plakechidis spiritual, Kimukai, Kimukai moloringi. We can go without knowing the place or getting the information ya plake. Me saying so is because of some of the people, ba kwe melakuma i ngawa wana to go and celebrate their holidays. Moloring, they enter the places, basa tibongore, iye miswang, but then for them, it's an adventure. For us, bava ngoba loring, we maybe grown up kamaa ra di religion, it's a spiritual place. And for one not acknowledging or kamo, it's a spiritual place, you go through tough times. Some of them, they go and they never came back. Some of them, they go for some swimming, but then they never came out of the water. So, my plea is that ore, let's try and acknowledge the spiritual places. Let's try and remove the spiritual places into individual hands. Re zamorodi diya ore, diwe, kafas ra mushu, oto hono tsewe ra kachona, oto hono ore, le accessi, motu, ai ta tonyakuwe, accessa. Iska ba na as an individual kere, give me two cents so that you can go through. Eh, ki ona plea diaka, thank you.
Greetings, my name is Fulala Maleka from Mukopani in Wat 32. Eh, firstly, I would like to eh, indicate that I support this bill. And eh, it seems eh, to us that we will eventually reach a point where the government gets together with eh, the chiefs and the traditional eh, leaders. Now, we seek to have access to spiritual places, sacred places. As eh, eh, these spiritual places eh, should be actually respected. Eh, because there are times whereby one would because there are times whereby one would go there, others would go for a swim and never come back. So, we are making a plea that such places should be removed from private hands so that they can be accessible to everyone who needs to access them. I thank you.
Re leboha ba thwawa kholu. Ki viza ba thwawa kholu kathom po kya tsebaro ba chava ten kamo kholu.
Thank you very much, ke, thank you very much to the elders. I'm saying elders because of the respect that I want to show.
We had a very fruitful deliberations and we have achieved the intended purpose.
Re bilele di pleche no chao, 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 kaka tlego ku, dugo merho no fitchela la, my, kemi shacho magolu akopani.
Erakilele bohe botle balinkilen karolo kahubua, kahungola, kahumamela.
Let me take this opportunity to thank everybody who participated in today's meeting by, in, in, in written and writing form and also in oral submissions.
Ke leboha maloko akomi diye, hobale pelwe tele homamela, le honka di nozu habadudi baruna banzebaita di submissions.
I would also like to thank the members of this committee for their patience, for sitting here all day, taking notes and listening to the members of the communities making their submissions.
Re leboha musa khola wa Watabek municipality kubalerona.
Re lebo reli enas pikara, sa masbala wa Watabek re abilele reyna.
We had earlier on also councilamboweni and all councillors that might have joined us in the process.
Ijenari bilele enam councilamboweni, le bo, le mure, le makansela amango alore, ntena koiya bayile bava lerena fa.
We also wanna thank Watabek FM to have broadcasted live this event.
Rapera lebo re siyalimoya, sa Watabek FM, kare bayile ba rasha kopa noye, tuwi, rochana mo le filongla kopa.
Our parliamentary channel was also live so bo, tselohuzwa mo televisioni.
Lika nalea reyna ya parliamente, ye rasha tuwi, biyalo kamo kafa, reto, reto chwela onaguwa televisioni.
Ne kisabato olile wala la, rabate mohorilebele una, oska ekta ubewena.
So, I decided not to let you know that you are going to be live so that you can just relax and then be yourself.
Now, I have explained hori processye harika etamo, rekatalika di provinces zedi ngoto khwetsa juang hori ifichalele le mo lao.
Biyalo, now I have explained about the processes that are going to follow after this hearing so that we ultimately have an act of parliament.
Ke lebohela hori lebele tse rekaro lo, ho dira mo lao, orinzeru buisana kabilaya on.
Thank you very much for participating in writing the law, participating in the bill that we have been talking about today.
Swalan hokwala, recenteru buleti le di written submissions.
The rest, the chishi, chao tlagatzela ya ngwa lo, they are still, we are still open for them, continue writing and then submitting them.
Kitibisi zo hori haretoa mo, retwenhan tleba botle reska, khola khola nadijoga tla difumanaha haretoa kalimat.
So, as we'll be leaving this venue, please let's not bump into each other. We are going to receive, receive a meal as we'll be making our way out of the venue.
Yanon kare bujaka tappelo harimen kama outore kwalimu sebeze.
And now, can we all please rise, stand on our feet so that can close the meeting with a short prayer?
May the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, the love of God, the sweet fellowship of the Holy Spirit, rest and abide with all of us now and forever. Amen.
Re lebohile apu la elinele.